Calling the meeting of March 11th, 2020 of the board.
Read our candy.
There were no questions submitted by the board members and so we will move on to roll call. Here?
Here.
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 Great, are there any public comments? No. Okay, we are going to be moving into closed session and we are taking into consideration number three point A is the Isaac Charter request under Proposition 39. And then the board is adjourning into closed session with the administration staff and district council to discuss contingency plans regarding multiple potential claims by various individuals and entities related to the COVID-19 virus. Conference with legal counsel. Also, I think that's all I have to read correct.
That's it.
And we have, so we will recess into closed session. Okay, I have a couple of things I need to report out from closed session. In closed session, the board took action to authorize the superintendent or designated to give notice of non-relection to a certain certificated employee CE 2020-21-01 who shall be released from their certificated position at the conclusion of the current year pursuant to Education Code 44929.21. And the roll call vote was as follows: seven ayes, zero noes. Also in closed session, the trustees met with staff and district council, received reports regarding anticipated claims against the district related to the COVID-19, considered potential responses by the district, and gave specific direction to staff to take necessary actions to protect students and staff, limit potential liability of the district, and protect the public health by entering into agreements with service providers if necessary, subject to ratification by the board at a subsequent board meeting. Thank you. So we are now moving into open session. Please stand for a moment of reflection and the political allegiance led by Bailey Bogard.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May I have adoption of the agenda, please?
Move adoption.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of the minutes of January 13th, 2020, February 11th, 2020, and February 26th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Snell, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey, I mean, I'm sorry, Mrs. Matoye. Are we doing roll, do we supposed to do roll call? Sorry about that. Roll call.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
President Flor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, if we can go back to the adoption of the agenda, there was one item that staff had requested to be pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, didn't see that.
Yeah, that was 17B2s. We're still working through some of the contract with OCFAIR.
Okay. So can we, it's on my cheat sheet. Okay, so we're going to go back to adoption of the agenda and rescind that motion and start again with the amended, so.
So moved with the amendment of, do I have to state of pulling 17B2?
Second. Okay, and also, two cases were removed from student expulsion, 1932-78 and 1933-78. Okay, so Mrs. Snell moved, Mrs. Matoye seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Okay, moving on to recognitions, how exciting this is for 2019, 2020 NMFT Teacher of the Year recipients. Dr. Doughty will make a presentation. I do want to let everybody know that we're exercising lots of caution, so we will be fist pumping.
Or virtual.
Or virtual handshaking. So it's not that we don't love you all, it's that we want to be, abundance of caution and we're following CDC guidelines. Dr. Doughty.
So, good evening, President Flor, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the community. I'm Brett Doughty. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, and this is one of the exciting moments that we have for the entire year, where we are presenting to you, the school board, our two Teachers of the Year whom are moving forward to the county competition. So I just want to speak a little bit about the process first, and then we will brag about these amazing teachers. So firstly, we did the bulk of our presentation and awards at the Schools Foundation, Newport Mesa Schools Foundation Awards Evening on February 6th. And the overall process for selection of Teachers of the Year is managed by NMFT and supported by the district by giving us some time to get out to do this process. And everyone is allowed to nominate for Teachers of the Year. And so we encourage parents and students and staff to make nominations, and the other employees that we represent have other programs for recognizing them as well. The nominees submit applications. We encourage everyone to turn in an application, but not everyone does. So while we wish that we had a Teacher of the Year from every single school site, we got nominations from all the places, but we didn't get applications returned for all of them. And we try to make our system to mirror the county process, so there is a written reflection. And from that process, we identified nine finalists, and those are the finalists that we do a classroom visitation and interview. And we are proud and excited to introduce our two persons whom are moving forward to the county competition. We have Jackie Brown from California Elementary. Yay, Jackie. And I'm just going to say both their names first, and then we'll let you kind of do your certificates. And we also have Sue Stokes from Newport Coast Elementary.
Yay, Sue.
So both of these teachers are truly inspiring to all of us. Those of us that visited their classrooms saw what amazing connections they make with children. Their staff is inspired by how they conduct themselves and how they give to the profession. And we truly see them as persons to look up to, whether they are, wherever they are in their, in their career path, they truly are persons that we respect and admire greatly. So we wanted to say thank you very much. And I understand that Mrs. Snell and Mrs. Yelsey are going to be making presentations. So Jackie, if you want to have your cohort come up, and I turn the microphone over to Mrs. Snell.
The microphone over to me for what? Oh, well, congratulations. And I'm sorry, I can't give you a hug. Thank you so much for everything you do. Well deserved.
Thank you.
So do you have anyone with you? You want to do a quick photo with Mrs. Snell?
Can you get her to the mic, Britt?
Oh.
Britt, can you get her to the mic?
Jackie?
Jackie, you want to step to the mic?
And introduce who you brought with.
Hi, this is Ryan Longaker. He's my principal.
Hi, Ryan.
He's also a friend, and we, my first year at California Elementary, 10 years ago, he was the fifth grade teacher and I was the sixth grade teacher. So now he's my principal. And friend.
That's great. Ryan, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I would just echo Jackie's comments. We go back 10 years. When you walk into her room, it's joy. You can see the passion in her teaching. It's, you could see the passion and the joy in her students, and it's, it's a very pleasant, wonderful place to learn, so I'm super proud of her. Thank you.
And I now would like to present this to Sue Stokes, who's been an awesome teacher for many, many years, and it's great that she's being recognized. So. We have a big contingency from Newport Coast, so guys, come on in.
These are my sisters and Principal Summer Harding.
You want to sit to the microphone, Sue?
Sure. I've got my principal, Summer Harding, the PTA president, Stephanie Walsh, and my family, my two sisters, Stacy and Sally, my son, Jason, and my husband, Randy.
And of course. And of course, for those of you that don't know, Sue Stokes's mother was Serene Stokes, who was a three-term school board member.
And she wanted to be here tonight, but my mom's 91 and my dad's 90, so they are staying home.
Smart move.
I have to take lots of pictures.
Social distancing.
Give a high sue, put her front and center with Mrs. Yelsey.
Come on, ready? Come on in. Come here, Stephanie. Come here, Stephanie. How do you take a photo for my NCE?
Okay, there you go.
Sorry. Should I go forward and bend down?
Yes, you go forward.
Sure.
That's a good idea. We have lots of garlic. Do more. Okay, well, that's good. It's important. Thank you.
Terrific. Congratulations. It's so fabulous because they're going to move on and move on to.
Mrs. Flor?
Yes.
We are going to announce the new student board member program tonight, and I know we're doing it during our report, but I would love to have some time before our students, because our reports come at the very end of the meeting. I would, I would like to talk about it before the students leave at whatever point you think is a good time.
How about if we move it to right after informal reports, item 16?
Perfect. Thank you.
Does that work? Okay. Terrific. Thank you. So, Dr. Navarro, superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry, community input.
Community input, right.
So.
Okay. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. And there's a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board staff or members of the public may request that a specific item on the consent be moved to discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on consent calendars. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video, meetings, video record. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the video record.
Great. I have three comments on non-agenda items, so I'll call those first. Dennis Ashendorf?
Happy birthday.
That's right.
Thank you. Oldest teacher in the district, just about. Good evening, President Flor, Vice President Yelsey, trustees, and Superintendent Navarro. My name is Dennis Ashendorf. I live in Coast Mesa. Please forgive my dedicating 2020 as my Don Quixote tilting at windmills year. I know lead balloons. Recall the recent math presentation, where one teacher noted that she skipped two out of nine units, but her students still increased their S-BAC scores. Our new math programs, championed by Mr. Lee Sung, Mr. Drake, and Mr. Del Rio, provide exceptional K1 viability. Importantly, they center on student classroom experiences. We're so accustomed to skipping units that we've forgotten that it's nuts. We need a guaranteed curriculum. We need to give students enough class time for learning for comprehensive equity. In college, I had five, three, and one unit courses. Yet in middle and high school, not only is everything five units, but we encourage electives at the expense of time in core classes. Fixed periods arose when there were no standards, no external tests, teachers just taught. Now power standards and skipping materials are expected. It's madness. Next year, we can remedy the situation. Consider, one, not six-period days, not four plus four, but five and one-half period days, where regular classes are 62 minutes long, not 45, not 50, not 55. Regular classes were worth 5.5 credits, and the half-period, 2.5 credits. Remember, our laws refer to school years, not credits. A full A to G curriculum with recommended courses would require 231 credits. With an 8:30 school start, students using zero periods would complete school at 2:02 or earlier, at the small price of a full elective lost every two years. We now require 16 in high school. Our current schedule change process is unduly contentious. I suffered once through it. We will likely initiate 8:30 starts by simply offsetting the current bell schedules. I've submitted the 5.5 idea to the administration and the union, yet who needs one more battle? Ugh. However, you can reduce student stress by increasing class time, let students complete classes, stop skipping materials, which forces obsolete procedural learning. Please consider an MOU for a one-year 5.5 bell schedule trial. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Erica Gonzalez?
I'm here representing Woodyer Elementary, parents. I'm the treasurer for the PTA this year. I have a few concerns. We're just wondering, all parents are wondering, when we're getting a new principal, a set principal for the upcoming 2020-21 school year. It's been a very difficult year. We've, PTA has had a few programs that we wanted to bring in, and we brought the information to the table, such as the Parker-Anderson Enrichment After School Program. I have emails from both ends, from the principal and the program. Seems the program was ready to go, just the district facility use permit was in place, and it seems the principal just kicked it off to the curb and postponed it, hopefully for the upcoming year, but it's very hard and difficult to plan ahead when we don't know who will be, who will be there in office. Another concern that I have would be, and I'm hearing this from other teachers, they're thinking of pulling out their student due to having only one teacher for the dual immersion program. I believe it is 42 students for one teacher in the classroom that are being taught the dual immersion program. Parents are thinking of pulling out their children due to that, if it's going to be an ongoing issue for the next year. So that would be one concern, also hiring two sets of teachers for the fifth-grade dual immersion program. So parents are wondering about that. Another thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand there is a proposed budget to replace all the fences in the school district. I know it's on a first, first or priority basis system. I believe our school is a priority. We, I do see oxidation on the fence, it's rusted, you know, we live by the ocean, so it does corrode very easily. Not only that, I constantly see children jumping over the fence and going on campus during off-school hours. And I know this because I live right across the school. So weekends, I constantly see kids coming in with their skateboard and whatnot. Not only that, if it's that easy for them to come on campus, how, how easy is it for an intruder to get on campus? So we really do need that fence, and I think that would be it for today.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Before Ms. Gonzalez leaves, perhaps I could ask Mrs. Olson to give you an update on the timeline for the principal selection?
Yes, actually, we are ready to post for the position. It will be posted and advertised beginning Monday, and then it closes on April 10th. And then there will be interviews, screening and interviews. I don't have the, all of the exact dates, but hopefully through the end of April, we would have a better idea of where we're at.
Okay, would, is there a possibility to have the same issue as this year? I understand people who came in for the interview didn't meet the qualifications that the parents were expecting.
So I'd like to clarify, and thank you for that opportunity to do so. All of our, all of our applicants and candidates that were selected for the interview met the qualifications that we posted for.
Okay.
How people on a panel perceive those, the quality of those qualifications varies greatly, and which is why we have a panel process. And in fact, we have two panels. We have an interpersonal panel, we have a technical panel. Those who are successful would move to the next level, which involves the reference checks as well as a cabinet interview.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Could you, so also, Leona, there, one of the questions too was that, on the, on the posting, it says bilingual highly.
Desired.
Desired.
Yes, the posting is very, is specific in the fact of indicating the size of the school, the programs of the school, being the dual immersion, as well as being a Title I school, and that we are looking for somebody who is energetic, a good communicator, and that fosters a positive school environment, as well as bilingual in Spanish, highly desirable.
Yes.
And I don't know if I used all the exact words, because I don't have it memorized, but it was pretty close.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Diana Igueros?
Hi, everyone. My name is Diana Igueros. I'm the PTA at Woodyer Elementary School. Basically, my treasurer took all the questions I have. So I basically just wanted to thank you. We finally have our marquee. We fought for that a long time, and like she said, we're looking for a new principal. We really need it. And I heard that you guys already have a person, which, thank you so much. Not only that, we really, really need a new fence. Please keep that in mind, like, like she said, she lives across the street, so she constantly tells me what's going on, and I'm like, there's nothing else we can do about that right now. So, like, like I said, she had all my questions ready, so please keep this in your mind, and thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a schedule for them? We have two more. Discussion action. Discussion action. They're both from Wendy. Wendy, do you want to wait until 18B and 18D?
You have to play the budget. I'm here with a budget.
Okay, perfect. We'll hold them until then. All right. Moving on to student board members. Bailey, you want to start us off?
Of course. Hi, everybody. I'm Bailey Bogard, the school board rep for Newport Harbor High School. So academically, our physics, our AP physics students are very happy that we have some UCI students that are helping out with their labs and learning and student teachers, which is awesome. Athletically, our March Madness teams have just gotten associated, and they're starting to play at lunch. And our boys volleyball is fifth in CIF, and we're very excited to keep continuing to hype them up and everything. Recent events that have occurred, our college knowledge night happened last week, in which there were multiple speakers to inform students about OCC, college prep, ACT testing, and everything like that. And there were very, there were, there was actually, I think, our largest turnout on that college knowledge night, which was awesome. And we're going to continue that tradition every year to sort of prep any sort of age range of students in order to prepare for college in the way that they want to prepare. Also, our Latinos Unidos Club just hosted a dance on campus last Friday, in which they were able to fundraise and put on an exciting night. And upcoming events, we have our Black Light Dance on Friday from 7:30 to 10:30. And some unique information, our Reyes Dance Team is putting on their performance next Friday, next weekend, in which all the dance teams, we have Dance 1, 2, 3, and there's so many students in dance that they're able to showcase their talents to their whole, to the whole school. So, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
Friday, next weekend, in which all the dance teams, we have Dance One, Two, Three, and there's so many students in dance, that they're able to showcase their talents to their whole, to the whole school. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And then we have Kenya Rocha from Estancia High School.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm from Estancia High School. So for an academic update, our teachers are getting, or are getting their kids ready for their English learn, for the English learners, which is on Monday, March 30th. For athletic update, our pool just opened, so our swimmers are really excited for that, because it looks really nice. Yes, and we have a game this Thursday versus Garden Grove. And our boys baseball Battle of the Bell is this Friday at the Angel Stadium. Some events that are currently happening at our school is WASC just came to our school, which is pretty exciting, since we've, like, never done that before. So our ASB had a beautification day the, last Saturday, to get ready for WASC. And right now, we are having World Heritage Week to celebrate all the ethnicities in our school. Two events that will be coming up is our ELEC meeting is March 12, and we'll be having future Eagle Night, March 26.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have, we have Troy, it's Troy Sivota, from Costa Mesa High School.
Hello, sorry. Hello, everyone. I'm Troy Sivota. I'm subbing for Caroline Brewster from Corona Del Mar High School. So for an academic update, there are many things that we've put into place to help guide our students for next steps for high school. So for students looking to apply for college, there was a recent workshop about approaches to writing college essays, I believe that was this week. And we also created an Instagram account to support students and give advice to underclassmen about high school and college. As for athletics, the spring sports season was kicked off by boys volleyball. They won their opening match against Loyola High School. And girls lacrosse is ranked number one in Division II CIF Southern Section, so that's pretty cool. This past weekend, the Orchesters Dance Team had their annual orchestral show. This year, the theme was New Orc Times, and all the dances were components of newspapers and current events. Two of the three shows sold out, so it was a good showing. In upcoming events, this week is Inclusion Week, which promotes kindness and empathy. This Friday, there is a casual Inclusion Week dance in our quad, if it doesn't rain, otherwise it'll be in the gym. And we'll have games, food, and more, and it'll all be free, and we're going to have a good time. Also, next week, in the spirit of St. Patrick's Day, on Tuesday, ASB will be giving out Lucky Charms and green bagels before school. On Monday, we featured Camille Kreitz, Syracuse's, Syracuse University's Associate Director of Admissions, as one of our lunchtime speakers. She gave advice on how to choose a major when applying to college. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. And then I believe you have two from Catherine Pham and Luke, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Luke is from Early College High School, and he reports that the end of their third quarter is coming up next week on March 20th, because they are on a true collegiate calendar, not even our collegiate calendar. We, they then go into spring break from March 23rd to March 27th. They mere Coastline University, or Coastline College. March is a month of, with lots of events occurring on campus that we'd like to share. Last week was their Battle of the Sexes lunchtime activity, with dress-up activities occurring Monday through Thursday. The week ended with their fifth house competition of the school year, with soccer matches played that Friday afternoon. Also, last Friday, 46 avid students, along with Dr. Martinez and four staff members, took part in the annual Avid Night at Knott's Berry Farm event hosted by the Orange County Department of Education Avid Division. Later on, later this week on Friday, they are holding, oh, that's good to know, they are holding their annual blood drive in our multipurpose room from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM for students and district employees who wish to participate. Friday is also early action, early college high school application deadline for prospective student applicants. Their regular application deadline is May 1st. Next week, their open house event is occurring on Thursday, March 19th. The event is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and is not only open to their own families, but also other families within our school district, as an opportunity for them to learn more about early college high school. The following week during spring break, 30 students, along with Dr. Martinez and Mrs. Taylor, are planning to head to the Pallie Resort in Running Springs to participate in the annual UCI Camp Med program for the third consecutive year. This is their, our largest group of students that we had chosen for the trip, as we will be going, joining Westminster, Los Amigos, and Pacific High Schools, March 27th through 29th. Lastly, they are thankful that local veterans will be visiting our World History and US Class, History classes this Friday, as part of the Living History Program. They will have their last set of veteran speakers for the school year come on April 10th. And that is from Luke. I'm going to keep that, because the blood date times. And then Catherine, from Costa Mesa High School, says, "Congratulations to Costa Mesa High School Girls State Representative Jasmine Diaz. She will join the other top 1% of girls at Girls State this year." Another congratulations to our Mesa team, who placed, and it, this always confused me, because it's, this is math, engineering, and science achievement, not Costa Mesa Mesa. So Mesa has a Mesa team. They placed first in the preliminary competition, and they're moving into regionals. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, jazz band and choir put on their annual jazz cabaret. Food was served, music was played, and the audience sat upon the stage. Our gardening for mindful march has started up. The garden will be open every Friday. Students are welcome to come help remove weeds, plant crops, and earn community service hours. Next Friday is 7P, at 7:00 PM, is Costa Mesa High School Drama Department Guys and Dolls Opening Night. Boys baseball will also be with Estancia, playing at the Battle of the Bell game this Friday at Angel Stadium. And that's our two other reports. Thank you, Mrs. Floor.
Thank you. How are you? Come on in. Come on, Vicky, come on.
Happy to be here tonight on behalf of Harbor Council. I'm standing in for Julie in her absence. I just have to say a little side note, my daughter's first grade teacher was Sue Stokes, and she was amazing. We loved her. So the award is of no surprise. We are all looking forward to the administrators' dinner for Fourth District PTA, coming up next Wednesday night, March 18th, at The Grove. It's our annual event for Orange County PTAs to be together and award things for the best program, the best unit, the best council, as well as visiting with other administrators from Orange County. It's a great opportunity and a once-a-year event, so it's, it's really something we look forward to. We just got back from Sacramento Safari, and I won't spend a lot of time on that, because I'm sure you've already been downloaded with the types of things that went on and how great a program it was. It was an inspiring event that was attended by 90 PTA leaders. The best speakers that I've ever heard at Sac Safari occurred this time, best speakers. We even had Tony Thurman, Betty Yee, the state controller, Dr. Pan, complete with his security team, because of his campaign for immunizations in schools. It was really stunning, a very stunning lineup of speakers. In spite of the coronavirus that is causing quite a scare, we at Harbor Council are supporting all the policies set forth by NMUSD. I had an opportunity a couple weeks ago to attend the last parent ed session that was presented by Corey Brosh of Phoenix House, which is an addiction facility. It was very hard-hitting. He was a great speaker and extremely informative with a lot of facts. One of the best presentations I've heard, and I've heard many of them, about addictions, about vaping, about, you know, all types of things that are involved with our kids today. But he was really outstanding. He had a lot of information on the gaming addiction that occurs often with kids today, and the psychology behind gaming, and the gaming companies, and what they set out to do. And he also told you of the games that you should allow your kids to do, and why. Very in-depth information. He explained why they, why their demand for phone time is so high, and how so many of them, other than maybe just a couple hours a day, have their phones in their hands and are following it and scrolling the whole time, and how they depend on it for social enforcement. And it afflicts, it afflicts all of our kids. The, the response time they have to post is critical to them. If they don't get a certain response from people after posting anything or a tweet, within a very short period of time, they panic, they start trying to get it off. And it's, it's a very stressful thing for kids in, in life today. Our generations don't understand, because we didn't have that when we grew up. I attended the morning session. We had about 35 to 40 people, which I thought was very, very good for a morning session, since that's a new, new thing that we're trying to split sessions, morning and evening. I didn't attend the evening one, so I don't know how well-attended it was.
It was great. It was.
I predicted they would have a lot of people.
Yeah. It wasn't packed, but it was.
A lot of people.
But a lot of people are asking for more, because they want to share it with their peers.
That's the way I felt when, when I left, was, we need more of this. And we are looking at the possibility of having him speak at our Harbor Council meetings for next year, and making him more exposed to the PTA presidents and possibly, you know, reaching out to their schools. We've had our elections. Our new president will be Noel Kruger, who comes to us from Early College High. And our new executive vice president will be Lisa Bowler. Most people know her. We also had a speaker at our last Harbor Council meeting, Sherry Newman. You may know her. She's from the OCDE. She is their new, new, like, for the last two years, family engagement specialist. And she spoke to us. It was very interesting. She had a new perspective on the meeting, the meaning of family engagement. She saw engagement as not something of communicating with your parents and sending notices out and making sure that they understand, you know, what's going on at the school district, et cetera. She sees family engagement where the parent is actually involved in what is going on in the school, where they physically come in for movie nights, for a science night with the families, bringing in speakers that will bring them into their schools, fairs that are held, cultural expression events that are being held, and exchange events. All of these are events that PTA just loves, because it does just that. It brings the families and the parents into the school environment and makes it a better environment totally. But she was very interesting. Please mark on your calendar, May 4th, coming up, our annual honorary service awards luncheon, which will be held at the Avenue of the Arts Hotel again. It will start at 11:30. The cost is $48 per person. Please RSVP by April 6th, and you will be missed if you're not there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving on to reports. Special education inclusion progress report. Dr. Navarro.
I'm handing it off to our Student Services Assistant, Sue.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, everyone. We have quite the presentation for you this evening. We have some different schools that are coming to present on some of their inclusive practices that we have. And Carrie Adams, who is one of our special ed coordinators, she's going to be kind of leading off and kind of being the facilitator of this conversation. However, I said that I wanted to share the vision. You know, I'm big on, this one isn't mine. The MTSS one that I shared with you all was, was mine. And this is one that has really come through the entire department. And that is, you know, really looking at how we maximize the independence, long-term quality of life, and inclusion of all. And so it helps really frame, especially during this month, which is Inclusive Practices Month, and you're going to be hopefully adopting a resolution later that really supports that. This board has been very supportive since I've been here, in terms of moving us towards more inclusive practices within the district. And, and, you know, our, our learning centers and eliminating our mild-moderate special day classes at the elementary level was the first step towards that. And you're going to hear some of that tonight, and then you're going to hear so much more of, of what else this comprises and, and turns into. So I'm going to turn it over to Carrie.
Hi. Good evening, President Floor, Board, Dr. Navarro, Executive Cabinet. Sorry, is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Should I do that again? Okay. It's always an honor to be here and a great pleasure, especially to talk about inclusive practices. As you might remember, when I was here a year ago, I'm very passionate about this topic. But I am actually even more honored today, because I get to introduce those people who are making our department passionate reality. So I'm very excited that we have three different schools that we're highlighting. And even though you're only hearing from three tonight, know that there's so much more going on, but we really wanted to spend quality time on a few schools that are doing some amazing things. And so we have representatives from Newport Elementary, Enson Intermedia, and Corona Del Mar High School that are here to talk to you today. And we're going to begin our presentation with this lovely team here. We have Amanda Estrada, who is the principal of Newport Elementary. We have Allison Concanon, which is our general education teacher. And we have Emily Aron, our special education teacher, who are going to take it away from here and talk about Newport Ls.
Good evening. I'm excited to share with you some of what we are doing as far as inclusive practices and co-teaching at Newport Elementary. And I get to be here with my, some of my fabulous team. So to give you some background, as you know, Newport L used to have three mild-moderate special day classes, and we had a traditional RSP model for our students on IEPs. The decision was made, and we moved forward in the 2017, 2018 school year, that those SDC classes would no longer exist, and all of those students were fully included on Gen Ed rosters in, in general education classrooms, and then being supported with inclusive practices and the specialized academic instruction model. And each year, we have continued to grow our capacity for co-teaching and including more and more inclusive practices. So all of this takes a lot of planning. The first year was a lot, and then each year, moving forward. We are very fortunate with having fantastic SAI teachers. And so one of the things that we look at is the caseload distribution for them. We also have to carefully consider student needs. There are some needs where they can really thrive with push-in support, some need more pull-out support, so we look at that balance. We have academic and behavior needs. We really look at our paraeducator strengths, and we have some wonderful paraeducators. We look at, you know, which students would do well and succeed with which general education teachers. And then one of the biggest things is which general education teachers are willing to have that co-teaching happen in their classrooms. And these two lovely ladies were, were some of the first to really grab onto that concept. And with their success, more and more of our Gen Ed teachers are wanting that co-teaching experience. And there are more and more of us, myself included, going to quite a bit of co-teaching professional development. Another thing that we consider is our master schedule. You know, all of this takes a lot of moving parts, working around to make sure that those SAI teachers truly have the time to get into those Gen Ed classrooms for push-in and for co-teaching. And then something that we really highly value is time. These teachers need time to collaborate with one another. If they're going to really serve these students, and these students are going to be successful, then they need that time to work together, not just to talk about the kids, but to talk about curriculum and lesson planning and accommodations and all of that. So now I'm going to turn it over to Emily Aaron, one of our SAI teachers, and she'll talk to you about what this actually looks like.
Hi. I'm Emily. I've been at Newport L for seven years. For the first four, I was an SDC teacher, and then I got to transition my fourth through sixth graders into fully included Gen Ed situations. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about what it looks like on our campus and what my day looks like as a special ed teacher. Our lower grades and upper grades kind of look a little bit different. I have another special education colleague who takes Kinder through third. She works on a lot of foundational skills and does a lot of, you know, pretty traditional pull-in small groups, still collaborating really heavily with the Gen Ed team. One of my favorite things is that I am fully considered a part of the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade planning teams. They all consider me a teammate, which is kind of novel. I didn't get that as an SDC teacher, so that is something that's really like, the heartwarming side of teaching that I love. I get to spend between two-thirds and three-fourths of my time in the Gen Ed classroom, co-teaching with a Gen Ed teacher. And what that, Allison will talk a little bit more about the benefits for all the students, but the coolest thing for me has been to get to work with a couple hundred students rather than just 14. So my day really is taken up with kind of supporting in the classroom. And I wanted to give you a little bit of a visual as to how that looks. So this is six, or five different ways that co-teaching tends to look like. These are models by Marilyn Friend and Lynn Cook. Most people think that co-teaching kind of looks like the first two, like the special ed teacher sort of roams around and just checks up on kids and things like that. We've really noticed that the, the three to the right are far more effective, where both of us, both teachers in the room, are doing all the curriculum-based delivery of instruction pretty much at the same level. Very rarely do we have one of us taking a backseat. So we'll split the kids in half, we'll do small groups, so that we're both really utilizing the curriculum and giving the instruction in there. Also, the shared responsibility is a big part of it. I do a lot of grading. I go to parent conferences, and that part of it is, is really freeing for me to get to do those things. So next, Allison is going to talk about benefits for everybody.
Hello. This is a really exciting topic for me. I was like, I only have this much time. I have to talk quickly. But it's been really neat to work with Emily and Amanda in, in making this whole thing work. And one of the big things that I saw as a Gen Ed teacher was that this not only benefits special ed, it really benefits all students.
Oh, that's great.
And, you know, e- even before the inclusion, Emily and I would, her students would often come over to my classroom, so we kind of had something going. And then when we were given kind of full permission to do this, we were like, okay, this is so exciting. But you'll hear students say, I have two teachers. I don't have one teacher. So they really have two people to go to, two people to learn from. The kids, the, the best part of their day is when we're both in the classroom at the same time. They, we can reach every student. I mean, I, you know, we, that's one of the struggles of a Gen Ed teacher, I think any teacher, making sure you, you get to every student, whether it's just checking in with them, whether it's challenging them, or, you know, bringing them up to grade level or whatever their needs may be. And we get to do that, because we, there's two teachers in the room. There's also, the, the social-emotional part of the classroom seems to be that, that need for teaching social-emotional skills and all those things continue to grow. And having a second teacher there really helps support kids. There's a lot of times where students will go down to, we, we still have two classrooms, even though we often teach in the same one, but we're able to have students go to one classroom or the other, and either work on academic things, or, you know, talk to one of us, which, when we only have one teacher, that time is not always there to do that. So we're, we're allowed the time to, to really, really get to know students, work with students, and meet all their needs when we, you know, are, are using a co-teaching model. And just the culture of the school, and the, the kids, and their understanding, their empathy, is amazing. And, you know, like I, I think I mentioned this, it, you know, I, I know there's been, I've heard before, oh, you know, if they're special ed kids, are they going to, in the classroom, are they going to get all the attention? But like I said before, they really, we really get to split our time and challenge a lot of the kids, take that time to challenge and find ways to grow their knowledge and education. I know, I know, sorry. I think. Thank you.
All right. So as Allison mentioned, we have just seen such huge growth in our students, and really big shifts in our teachers' capacity to serve our students. And in preparation for this, we did ask just a handful of parents who have experienced this, you know, for some of what they are saying. And as you can see from these quotes, you know, we, one of, this first one, I think, is, is an important one, from a parent who really was very hesitant to participate in this. You know, she had, she has two students with very severe needs, and, but she went for it and is so happy that she did. You can read these. And then, you know, we have students, I, I think this one is important as well, even kids that don't have an IEP benefit from having two teachers working with them. That's, that's huge. It's a benefit for everybody. And then especially this last one, just the preparation, and how much more successful they feel and ready for moving on to Enson. You know, that's some of the best feedback, I think, that we've gotten, especially from those students who were part of the SDC class and had been in SDC since maybe kindergarten. And then they got to experience full inclusion with us before moving on to Enson, and they were just that much more successful. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Heidi McDowell, so that she can share what's going on at Enson.
Can I ask a quick question? Your groups, they're, they're mixed groups. They're not just, you're not just teaching special ed. Okay. So that, that's, seems to be really an advantage for the Gen Ed kits, too.
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And it's.
Socially.
For socially, that's that part that we talked about, the empathy has grown.
Absolutely.
And then for the students on IEPs, for them to have those. And then for the students on IEPs, for them to have those positive models and to be able to be socially a part of the group and with typical peers, their social skills, their academic behavior, all of that has grown tremendously.
Awesome. Great. Good job.
Good evening. I'm Heidi McDowell. I'm assistant principal at Enson. But inclusion is something that I have lived my whole life. I became a special ed teacher many moons ago and was a coordinator in our district. And then this is my fifth year at Enson. And what I wanted to talk to you guys about is the co-teaching that we're doing at Enson. And we have expanded beyond just students with IEPs. We've looked at expanding it to our EL students and some of our kids who have been struggling. And so one of the things that I presented to our staff when we talked about moving forward with a co-teaching model is we had to agree on some certain things. And some of these things are up here, which all students can learn. Not all students learn the same way or at the same speed. Some lack the skills or the knowledge. Some lack proper behaviors or steady skill, steady behaviors. And some have external factors, which I think our district is really looking at, that impact how they do in school. And so with those things in mind, we started to look at what really are inclusive practices. And I think it's important, the diagram here, you know, kind of shows the progression where you have the students on the outside of the bubble. Then you had them in separate, then you had them in the room, but in, maybe at a different table. And actually bringing the students all together in the room as, you know, the Newport L. team has done. And so how do you replicate that at a middle school level? And so we really looked at not only the special education students, but also our English language learners. Currently, right now at Enson, we have co-taught English. So we have a special education teacher and a general ed teacher. In seventh grade, we have an English section and a math section. And in eighth grade, we have English, math, and then two sections of science that are co-taught. And in every classroom, there's a special ed teacher and a general ed teacher. And then sometimes there's paraeducators. We looked at adding that to the option for our students who are learning English for, as their second language. And so we have our EL teacher pushing in to seventh grade English and seventh grade, eighth grade English. And then we also did a co-teach model in our Read 180 so that those students have more access to teachers and that support right there on demand when they need it. My big role is the planning. When you're trying to put together master schedules and things like that and what the classes are going to look like. So I wanted to hit really on, first, we wanted to identify the subjects and then the teacher teams, you know, who's going to work with who. We did it by teachers who were passionate and wanted to do it. But there's lots of ways to figure that out. We also required them to go to a co-teaching training together as a team prior to embarking on this. And then for me, especially as kind of leading the master schedule, you know, how many sections are we going to have? How many kids in each section are we going to have? We found it was really important for those teachers to have a common planning period. So hitting on that time factor, letting them actually have that same planning period so they can discuss what's going on. And then the other thing, too, that we started looking at is the composition of the classroom. You know, we don't want it too heavily skewed one way or the other. So what that kind of, that good spot is for how you have the kids placed in the class. And in the summer, I spent a lot of time hand-scheduling students into these classrooms to make sure that I'm managing what that composition looks like. Some of our adjustments and roadblocks, I think this is our, I think we're two and a half years in. We added EL just this year. But looking at grading, who's doing the grading and how are students being graded? Each of our teams kind of work it out. We kind of laugh like it's a, almost like a marriage because you're now sharing space and students and figuring that out. School loop access was a bit of an issue we had to figure out. Originally, we rostered students with IEPs with the sped teacher and then students, the other students. But then we learned they didn't have access to each other's school loop. Our teachers couldn't see what was happening in that school loop. So we had to figure out a way to work that. Also, the rostering was a part of it. We now roster most of the kids just on the general ed teacher so we can manage numbers better. We know how many students are in there. It also helps when you're rolling out data and looking at data. The technology was another. We had one teacher rolling out illuminate tests. Well, the kids who were not rostered on her couldn't get the test. So we figured workarounds. There is some ways where you can actually have two teachers listed and then both teachers have access. Same with the benchmarks. Google Classroom, our English team, actually, both teachers have a Google Classroom, but they both have access so they can give live feedback to either side of the roster. The accountability for teacher collaboration is something that, you know, just finding the time. You know, how do you collaborate with your English department, but also your special ed counterpart and then this? And so that is something. And then our, what we're hitting now is our teachers know what to do. They're in. It's now, how do you find that ongoing coaching? Teacher, somebody coming into the room and saying, oh, try this or do this so that you're pushing them through those five different models of types of co-teaching. And so that's kind of where we are now. I think that's.
Corona Del Mar.
So I want to say, just, you know, what I think you'll notice is that we may have a vision. And we may say, wouldn't this be great? And it's best for kids. But you really need the site administrators to not just buy in, but to co-own this. And, you know, Heidi has a lot of grit, you know? And that's what you need in order to make this successful. I mean, she's hand-doing schedules. She's figuring, you know, there's a lot of things that would fail a lesser person in terms of, oh, I can't make school loop work, or I can't make this work, or I can't figure this out. So with each of these challenges, she comes, okay, how are we going to do this? Let's figure it out and move on. And that's the mentality that these administrators have and also these teams. Because this isn't all sunshine and roses for these people. You've got to really learn how to work with somebody else. And, you know, if you're a teacher who's been here a while, you're really used to doing, you know, your own thing in your own classroom. So, you know, and it isn't somebody coming in and just, you know, being the, you know, the aide in your classroom. If you're co-teaching, it requires a lot. So before we turn it over to Corona Del Mar, I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, you can see the work that, you know, that Heidi has shared, but that's also true of our other site. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's getting in your throat?
Hi, I'm Jenna Anaya. I'm a speech and language pathologist at Corona Del Mar.
And I'm Anne Marie Selman. I'm one of the school psychologists at CDM. So not to discredit all of the wonderful academic things that are happening at the high school level. Also, we also have started co-teaching this year. But we're here to talk about social inclusion. So as we know, when you get to middle school and high school, the social world really opens up and it becomes very important for students. And our kind of goal through what we've been doing at CDM is to make sure that it's important and it's accessible for all students on campus. So we're here to talk about the Unified Champion Schools program. This is a new program that's been recently developed and kind of championed, no pun intended, by the Special Olympics organization. So historically, Special Olympics has been programming for students with intellectual disabilities, engaging in sports competition. What the Unified Champion Schools program is about unified competition. So it's general ed students and special ed students playing on the same team, side by side against similar teams. So it's been really neat. It's been a really, like, systems-wide change that we've been able to implement. In addition to the sports programming, there's some other components involved, which we'll speak about. But really, the idea is how can we make social inclusion important at CDM? How can we teach the students, you know, what inclusion is and what that looks like and what it means? And how can we find opportunities to not only create new opportunities for our students in general education and special education to participate in, but also how can we make the currently existing opportunities and events that are happening on campus already more inclusive?
So to be a Unified Champion School, there are three prongs, three requirements. The first is sports training and competition. And so you can see on the left, there are a few different options, a few different ways that schools can meet this criteria. There's the Unified Sports. There's Unified PE, which is an actual class in a student's schedule, a PE class that has general and special ed students. There's the Young Athletes Program at the lower grades. And then there's also just recreational play. Ultimately, the goal is that if students are playing together and interacting together through sports, they're going to develop friendships and there's going to be a level of understanding and engagement just built upon that. So at CDM, we've done a Unified Sports program where each year, we have a few different exhibition games. In the fall, we've done Unified Kickball Games. We just finished up in January, our Unified Basketball Exhibition Game, which is our biggest sports event of the year. And this year, we are hoping to partner with the team at T-Winkle Middle School and have our first Unified Soccer Event sometime this spring. So we'll be working with them as well.
The second prong, a requirement to become a Unified Champion School, is inclusive youth leadership. So while we are here presenting, we are what we like to think of as kind of ghostwriters of the project a little bit. We're helping to get it up and running. But ideally, this is kind of by the students, for the students. And so it's required that there be student leaders on campus to kind of help and develop the program and implement this change. So again, on the left-hand side, you can see that there's a bunch of different options and ways that this requirement can also be met. You can develop a Unified Club, which is how we started. This is, Unified Sea Kings was a club of their own that developed. You could also just kind of become part of an existing club or a group on campus. So a lot of campuses already have groups like PAL or their ASB. We're already doing things. That's what we've kind of grown into or evolved into as more of kind of an offshoot of ASB rather than a single club existing on our own. Or less formally, you can have what they refer to as a Youth Activation Committee. So just a less formal group of students who are getting together, talking about inclusion and spreading that message.
And then finally, you focus on whole school engagement. So it's not just working with that small group of students, but how can you affect change on the school culture and the school climate? So again, a few of the options include pep rallies, fans-in-the-stands events where you promote the exhibition games and try to pack the gym or stadium, doing some educational campaigns about inclusion and spreading the word to end the word discontinuing use of hurtful language that is commonplace, and then doing awareness assemblies. So we've done a combination of these things at CDM. We have King's Crew at CDM, which is our school spirit program. And they have been wonderful and they partner with us for all of our events. So each of our exhibition games is a King's Crew event that students are encouraged to attend. This week, we have Inclusion Week, which you heard about a little bit already. There are some educational activities on our morning announcements. They do activities at lunch and break. They did an inclusion pledge on Tuesday. They did some cookie decorating today. They have some other fun activities planned later in the week as well. And then we'll finish up the week with an inclusion carnival where all students are welcome. It's at school. It's not, we have it on the quad, trying to be a little more sensory-friendly for all of our students to be able to participate. And we have a variety of events, activities that our kids can participate in there as well. And then we've also partnered with our autism specialists to do a staff inclusion newsletter on campus just to keep all of our staff informed about inclusive practices that they can implement in their classrooms.
We have a unique opportunity because Troy is here from CDM. I just wondered if you had anything input to how it's rolled out or how, because I'm assuming you're an active person and you need to go up to the mic so we can hear you. But. That's okay. But whatever it is, you'd have to say it in the mic. Right.
A lot of pressure.
Yeah, so we started Inclusion Week, I believe, two or three years ago as like a full week-long, like celebrating not only like special education and like our relationship with them, but also just inclusivity in general. And I think the carnival I've been the past two years, and it's been like, I guess, a better experience than I guess maybe people, like normal high school students would initially think, like, oh, it's just, you know, special ed inclusion. But it's really, really fun and you get free food and stuff. So that's. And I think our high school's relationship with the special ed program is very, very well done. Like, there is very little like discrimination at our school when it comes to that sort of thing. As mentioned by all these different programs that we have, like the special ed students are very integrated in everything that we do. And everyone at Corona Del Mar knows this. And it's just kind of part of the culture that we live in, like that we live at the school. And it's a really great experience for all of us. And Inclusion Week is just kind of reaffirming this aspect of our school.
Great. Thank you so much for letting me put you on the spot.
I can't say enough good things about ASB and how much they've really adopted this mission and taken it on and kind of made it their own. So thank you to you guys.
Does this include, this obviously includes the middle school as well? Okay. It's, okay. Impressive.
So to end, I want to do a little plug on a, sorry, the microphone. A little plug on some event that we are having this year. It's our first annual movie night where we will be screening Intelligent Lives. This is, I think, a really powerful film that I encourage anyone to attend. There is a little RSVP you can send. It's coming up March 26th, starting at 5:00 PM. We are going to have some different food options for sale so families can come and eat. And then the movie screening will start around 7:00 o'clock. This movie is really about what a small percentage of who we are as people, is our IQ. It's really about, you know, we have a lot to contribute, no matter that number. And so we are really excited to have the screening coming to CDM, March 26th, again, 5:00 PM. It's in the lecture hall. And if you get a link to this PowerPoint, you can watch the little preview and get excited about it. And that is our presentation. And again, I thank you so much for letting me come up here and talk about inclusion or really to let my, our teams talk about inclusion.
Thank you so much.
I would like to just acknowledge not only Carrie, who was the brave one who is standing up front and speaking, but we do have several other of our special ed coordinators here. We have Bonnie Hinton and we have Alyssa Green. And we have Kristen Henry. And we have Kim Doyle, who are here, along with Candy Barilla as the director. And I think that they all touch this topic. And this is something as a group that they have really decided that they are all kind of jointly passionate about. And I think that's why we're having success. And it isn't one size fits all. Everyone's trying to just move each of their schools one step forward all the time, keep pushing them to, you know, keep embracing these inclusive practices.
Thank you so much. And I just want to reiterate, it takes a special kind of teacher and administrator to embrace this. And as an administrator who has to know their teachers well enough, because no matter what anybody tells you, the teachers are working really, really hard normally and you've just added another layer on it, the rewards can be so wonderful. We work this hard, teachers work this hard to get this much reward and that's all they need to do it again because it's so meaningful that you know you've made a difference in the life of a child. So thank you to all of our teachers, both special ed and Gen Ed, for going that extra distance for our kids. Ms. Yelsey.
Yes, and I just wanted to reaffirm what's happening with sports and other extracurricular activities at Corona Del Mar because every time I'm there for an event, whether it's a football game or a winter rally, the Sparkle cheerleaders or other kids from the special ed program are all included in the program. And they're dancing beside the football players who are just thrilled to have them and help them out. And it's really, and it comes easy. It's not something that's forced at the school. I think it's something that everybody appreciates.
It's part of the culture.
Yes, it's pretty amazing to watch just on a daily basis, what happens at CDM. So I really applaud them for what they've done in that area. And I just want to put in a plug for one other thing that's going on. I have been involved with the Newport Beach Special Olympics since four years ago. When the Special Olympics were in LA, I was part of that committee. And actually, they have a Newport Beach Special Olympics Celebration every year. This year is it on May 14th. It's at the Civic Center. I believe it starts at 5:00 o'clock and it's several hours. Sparkle comes, there's competitions. I have, anybody can sponsor. So if you want to be a sponsor, go online to Newport Beach Special Olympics Celebration. I am a sponsor of a team. And for the last two years, I have had three of our people in the audience, Carrie, Bonnie, and Candy, be part of my basketball team. in the audience, Carrie, Bonnie, and Candy, be part of my basketball team. I will invite you again this year to do it. It's on May 14th, okay?
Terrific. Thank you. So Item 15B is our Health Services Update with Dr. Jockum and our own National Nurse of the Year, Mary Graska. Allergies disclaimer.
President Flor, did you want to do the Student Board Member point at this point before we get into the report, because this might get a little lengthy?
He was making that offer.
They're leaving, yeah. That's fine. How do you, is that okay? Are you prepared to do it now? Sure. It's short.
Okay, perfect.
It's short.
I just, we formed a committee to look again at the Student Board Member Program. And Michelle Bartow and Karen Yelsey were on that committee. And what we were looking to do is to make it a more enriching, real governance experience. And so in order to do that, we've decided that there will be a representative from each of the high schools, each of the six high schools, but that representatives will be chosen by us. So in the past, it's always been ASB or the principal that has appointed these representatives. So it involves an application, and it would be for next year. And if you're an incoming next year, if you will be a junior or a senior, you can apply. The application will be online Friday. It involves a video, making a video and filling out an application. The experience, the time commitment is more than this, you would be, than it currently is. You would only have to attend one meeting a month, but you would have to stay for the entire meeting, unless it's one of those crazy ones that goes till 11:00. We won't make you stay that long. Usually, they're over by 9:00. It would involve training. It would involve attending a conference, a California School Board Conference, where you would meet other school board members. And it would also involve being, it would involve being involved with the superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, and any other responsibilities or opportunities for you to represent your school, and to take the message back to your school. We, the reason we are changing this program is we want more input from students. You would get an agenda. You would, you would be asked to come at 5:30. You would be provided dinner and the opportunity to meet with your other board members. You would have a provisional vote on things. We would expect you to be, to read the agenda and be prepared to participate in whatever way you wanted to do. I think this is an exciting way to, for those students that are interested in governance and interested in that perhaps as a career. And so Michelle did the wonderful application and also the flyer. As I said, this is supposed to be posted by Friday, and the applications are due on April 26th. Do you have something to add?
Yeah, so the reason that this really came about was when we were at our California School Boards Association Conference, and one of the meetings was about this Student Board Member Program and the way that another high school in California is doing it. And what was striking to us was both that the students, the high school students themselves, were giving the presentation at this, you know, Cal, whole state conference. And really, you could tell had a passion for civic leadership and learning about local government. And we wanted to bring that back, that opportunity back to students here. And then additionally, it was great to see the relationship that the student board members were able to build with the elected trustees and kind of develop that mentoring, especially, again, for those students who think, oh, maybe I'm interested in running for political office someday. So that's kind of the background on that.
So we hope, there's a lot of students in the audience, and we hope you will spread the word. We are going to, as I said, post this as well as the application on Friday. Dr. Bowermeister is going to talk to the principals, so they know. They've already gotten a bit of a heads-up about next year, and we're really excited. We're excited to have students be more involved in these meetings and other opportunities. And so thank you for, the committee thanks you for appointing us and letting us do this. And there is a timeline. I didn't really tell you the whole timeline, but April 26th is when the applications are due. There'll be like, very, there'll be an interview panel that will briefly interview the applicants. And then the main, the final candidate interviews will not be until May 18th, so well after your...
AP testing.
AP testing and everything. And you would be appointed and introduced at the June 9th meeting. So...
And there are applications, my understanding is, at the back? The flyers are at the back?
The flyers.
Oh, the flyers at the back.
And the application will be posted Friday.
And if you are an existing board member, student board member right now, and are 11th grader, you absolutely can't apply.
We encourage you to apply.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, now, oh. Do the student, the current student board members have any comments or questions?
No, I'm going to stay for the health update, for the health services. Because my ASB is asking me what's happening, because they're freaking out, so.
We don't want them freaking out.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Moving on.
They're staying for the health.
Yeah, we need to know what's going on.
Mr. Lee Sung, would you like to start us off?
All right, good evening, President Flor, board members, my cabinet colleagues, and members in the audience. I've been asked to talk about, it's a Health Services Report, but there's really only one topic on the Health Services Report. And that is the impact that we're all faced, facing with the coronavirus COVID-19. I need to acknowledge that these are unprecedented, extraordinary times right now that we're all facing. We as school leaders have faced many, many crises over the years, some of us over the decades. And I will tell you, this may be on the top of the list, just because of the impact that this has been thrust upon us, the concern and fear that many of us share. But while we're dealing with all of that and all the seriousness of this and the impacts, we're also trying to maintain calm amongst the people that we lead. We're trying to maintain as much normalcy. And obviously, our main mission is to continue instruction. But all of that has to be done with the student safety and our staff safety first. And so these last several weeks, the last month, have been very intense with the amount of discussions, reviewing of information, working with the experts in the field, working with this team, working with our partners, our union leaders, our school principals, listening to parents. It has been an amazing situation, and will continue to be for quite some time. So I wanted to just kind of lay that as the context. We have incredible partners, and I say not only here in our local area and part of our organization, but when I say partners, particularly in a public health crisis, we have partners with the State Department of Education, our local Orange County Department of Education, the State Department of Public Health, and our local Orange County Healthcare Agency. And I will tell you that one of the things that I've had the benefit of doing in this crisis is working with our Director of Health Services, Mary Graska. So before I address some topics that we've been hearing from our parents, from our staff, from our students, that I want to share with the board and share with the public, I do want to have Mary Graska come up and give you a brief update, and then we'll go into some of these other more specific areas. So Mary?
Thank you, Russell. Good evening. Probably you've already been made aware that it's all over the United States, and the coronavirus has impacted almost all of the countries except for Antarctica. And so what it means for us in Newport Mesa is our primary concern. And it's really been my privilege to work with the wonderful leadership that you have here at Newport Mesa. And this group has just been so collaborative and so focused on making sure that our students are healthy and our staff as well, and that we have the best environment provided for our community. We are very well-positioned in Newport Mesa because we have health services staff, we have school nurses, and we have health assistants at every school. And so our school Health Services Department has always been prepared to respond to a communicable disease outbreak. And in fact, school nursing and health services originated through a public health model. And so that has really been the primary focus of school health services. So our, in our schools, our health assistants are ready. They've been trained to respond to students who are presenting with illness at school, and our nurses as well. If we have challenging situations, we're taking a look at those one by one, working with our principals, and trying to do the best that we can to make sure that everybody's health needs are addressed. I don't know if there's anything else, Russell, that you'd like me to...
Just stay close by, Mary. Okay? All right. So it's assuring hearing Mary, isn't it?
Right.
Okay? She knows her craft, she knows the profession. She is regularly on the phone with the Director of the Orange County Healthcare Agency, getting the latest information or seeking information and clarifications of things. So I really appreciate Mary's work, particularly right now. One point I want to emphasize before I go into some of these areas, you know, when I say that we as a team, and when I say team, it really is everybody. It's every division is affected by this, every department, school sites, employees, and so on, that we have had to come together multiple times, not only on a regular schedule, but extra time, to really understand these complex issues. Because some of these things are unprecedented. We're being asked questions that we really need to think through and give the best answer with the information that we have. And many of these issues are balancing issues, because yes, absolutely, we need to protect the health and safety of our students and our staff, but we also have rights of students and parents and employees that we have to balance in making these decisions. So again, I just want to assure you as a board, we have an incredible team here. We communicate, we debate, and we reach the best decisions that we can with the information that we have. So with that, I want to go into a few areas, specific areas. And I need to start with this, and I hope everybody can recite this in their sleep at this point, the universal precautions. And so, you know, as much of all the things and these ideas and suggestions that people have been putting out, we fall back on the experts, and that is the guidelines that we're receiving from the health experts. And the first one on the list is if you're sick, stay home. It sounds simple, but that really is what we all need to practice, not only while the coronavirus is an issue, but all the time. And, you know, we've all been guilty of, you know what, we need to come to work, we're dedicated, come to school, because I need to study and get that grade. But in this day and age, we need to look out for ourselves and for each other. And so that's number one. The washing of hands is another very important thing. And I don't know what you women are doing, but in the men's restroom, we're policing each other. It's like, that was a little short. That wasn't quite 20 seconds, right? You guys know. So, so again, you know, the more we can bring this to a conscious level, and then the, you know, not shaking hands. We don't want to be impolite, but we need to do our part. Everybody needs to do their part, that we are not inadvertently transferring anything. Now, with that in mind, this weekend, the State Department of Education and the State Department of Health, they have been providing updates, and we got a very important update this weekend. And they are elevating the language and some of the actions that they are recommending that we take, and we are adhering to them. As an example of that, now when you go to any school site or any district office facility, we have a sign, a reminder, that says, hey, if you're sick, you need to not enter, call instead, and we will assist, and we'll find a way to make sure that business takes place. But we need to do our part, and those guidelines are aligned with the directives that we're being given by the, these agencies. Another area that I just want to assure everybody is that, of course, if we have a student or staff member who has been tested positive, these are situations that obviously there are very detailed procedures, and we take the guidance from the healthcare experts. And they will take control and exactly tell us what we can and can't do. Every situation will be handled based on its unique situation, okay? And we will work very closely with these agencies. I want to talk about field trips. And one of the common questions that I've been getting, and I know this kind of hits home to students, but the first thing that I have shared with principals, starting about two or three weeks ago, is giving them a heads-up and having a conversation with the people who are sponsoring field trips. And the number one thing I started with is the fact that we have to keep our priorities in the proper order, okay? The health and safety and the risks that we put our students in and our staff has to be our number one priority. These educational experiences are wonderful, and our, you as a board, us as a district, have been incredibly supportive of these educational experiences. But they are enrichment, they are supplemental, and it's not our core. And so we are looking very closely at all of our field trips, particularly our overnight field trips, particularly our trips that are overseas or other parts of the country, and we have to look at all of them. So I have asked principals to talk to the advisors. Some of them have voluntarily already chosen to withdraw the field trip. Some of the locations and some of the events that they were planning have been canceled. And I think what we're all seeing in the headlines is every day, more and more events are being canceled. So it might make our decision of whether that field trip goes forward or not moot at this point. But we have to look at that with the support of our superintendent and the board. I will be engaging in those conversations with the principals. But I just want to forewarn everybody that there is some very serious decisions that are going to have to be made, whether these overnight trips particularly are going to be moving forward. And again, I will work with principals, and we will make the best decision with everyone's interest in mind. The other thing that I want to put out there is the discussion that we are currently having on employee travel. So if we have these concerns about student travel, the same thing with employees. As they go to conferences around hundreds, thousands of people, some of these conferences are out of state, the same concerns that we have, because when they are out at these conferences, they are our employees, and we definitely feel responsibility for their care and their health. There's a guideline that we read, and the term that you may have already heard is so-
Social distancing.
Distancing measures. There we go. Social distancing measures. So they are asking all of us at this point to consider social distancing measures. So trying to avoid large crowds where there's a lot of contact and sharing of space. They're also telling us to evaluate all public gatherings, but they are stopping short of directing us to cancel public gatherings. But again, as we start reading and hearing the news, and one by one, events are being canceled. And there may come a time, and again, I just want to put that out there so that everyone's expectations are realistic, there may come a day where all social gatherings may have to be canceled, okay? So again, this is a conversation I want to forewarn our principals to get feedback. People are already making these decisions, and unfortunately, we're at that place. People are already making these decisions, and unfortunately, we're at that place, and it may not get any better soon. So we do need to consider that. All right, next category is cleaning and disinfecting. So we've been receiving a lot of information on what is appropriate in terms of cleaning. The first thing I want to assure everybody is the fact that our maintenance staff, they have guidelines in terms of what needs to be cleaned, what are considered priority areas, high-touch areas, and we have had an emphasized focus on those sanitation efforts. And so the monitoring of that's important. We have plenty of supplies to continue to do that on a daily basis for our maintenance staff. Where we want to go a little further is providing hand sanitizers in every classroom and every office throughout the district. That is our goal. And we want to make sure that, number one, hand washing in the restrooms is the number one priority. And by the way, our soap is antimicrobial soap. Did I say that right? Okay. Throughout the whole district, that's the only soap that we purchase, so it's good-quality soap. Hand washing is first, but if they can't do that, we want to have hand sanitizers available in every classroom. The problem is, the supply is very short. So we do have a small supply that is, actually, I believe is delivered today, and we will distribute that as far as that goes with classrooms being our first priority. And then we have a large bulk order on back order. We have been told, and this is something I think it's good for you and the public to know, that healthcare agencies, like hospitals, facilities, and military are getting the first priority of available supplies. The good news is we're third. We're third, okay? So as soon as we get those supplies, schools don't have to order them, we're going to distribute them based on the size of the school, the number of classrooms and staff members. The other area, again, to go a step further, are disinfecting wipes. Disinfecting wipes. So the fact that you need to know, I think is really important, is disinfecting wipes are considered a pesticide under the definition that we need to follow here at schools. So we have to be very careful with this product. And so giving instructions to our staff members on the proper use of disinfecting wipes is something that we have crafted to make sure that when we give out the product to staff, they have the guidelines in hand. A, because it's protection for them, and B, they want the product to work, we all want the product to work. So for many reasons, that's very important. The thing is, these disinfecting wipes are not for student use. And that may pose challenges, I think, for some teachers in some settings, we will work through that, but the instructions in the training, the instructions on the product itself says it's not for student use. So I really implore everybody to understand that. Not that we don't trust our students, but we just can't do that. And we will find a way to do our best to make sure those high-touch areas are properly disinfected. I want to add, our transportation department has also modified their cleaning schedule and how they do that to make sure that buses are properly cleaned and disinfected every day for our students' use. And if we have a situation where there is a coronavirus concern at a particular site, we are prepared to have a specialized crew to come in and do the appropriate cleaning based on all the guidelines. All right, another area has to do with student absences. And so we know that the ed code allows for student absences due to illness. We have gotten guidance, received guidance, that if a student is absent because of a self-quarantine, a self-quarantine issue, that we will also treat that as an excused absence. And we will work with that family to maintain instruction and continuity of their learning. If I go a step further, what happens if we have to close one school, multiple schools or all schools? And this has been kind of the newest wave of questions and concerns. And what I want to do is to assure you that we have been working on our plans in the event that we have to close a single school, multiple schools, or all of our schools. Jennifer Mishney, who is our Director of Educational Technology, and Austin Babavich, our Director of Informational Technology, has been on it. And even though this is not the time for me to share those plans, they have already formulated a lot, pulled together a lot of resources to create our plan in the event we have to close schools and we continue instruction. And in the appropriate time, if that comes, becomes the case, we will be here in front of you, we'll be here in front of the public to share that with you. But what I've seen so far, it is very detailed, and we're not waiting, we're going to make sure that if the notice comes, whether that's tomorrow, a week from now, or a month from now, we will be ready. That's what I wanted to assure you. And my closing. We will, the information is coming at a high rate of speed. Part of the struggles that I've had, that I feel in a much better place, is just managing all the information. Everybody wants to lend a helping hand, offer advice and this and that, and we appreciate that, but we have to rely on the guidance of the experts. And then the experts here within our district, and we've been meeting regularly with NMFT and CSEA, and to keep them in the loop, to listen to their concerns and what they're hearing from their unit members. But we're in this together, we will get through this, we will get through this, and we just need everyone's understanding and cooperation that may not be business as usual, there may be some changes that have to happen, but it's all with the best interests of our students' and staff health and safety in mind.
Russell, we have several questions from members of the board. Again, but on behalf of the board, thank you to all of you for really stepping up and taking this very seriously as it is, but also pulling together all the resources and the available resources. And Vicki, thank you, would you send that out to the PTA, because I know that they're very concerned that we've had that? We have a student board member, Bailey, do you have a question?
I do. Well, it wasn't exactly a question, it was more of a concern, because I was extremely sick last week, I missed one day, and it was extremely hard to make up. So I feel like, I know it would be hard to establish a make-up policy, but I know a few of my teachers have outrageous make-up policies that are very hard to keep up with, and I don't know if that could be district-wide, that's just a concern I'm expressing is that.
Bailey, thank you for sharing that. We have a principals' meeting on Monday, and almost the entire principal meeting will be dedicated to the issues, and getting feedback like this and feedback from the board is very helpful for me. Thank you.
And we have another one here, Troy.
You need a mic.
Don't shake hands, but you can use the mic.
Hi, so our school has a pep rally coming up in about two and a half weeks, which will have about 1,800 people in the gym. And we also have a lot of spring sports starting, like a lot of our big volleyball games will have spectators in the stands, it's going to number in the hundreds. And I think when we look at the priority lists, I would argue that pep rallies and, you know, sports, like sports spectating probably isn't on the highest priorities, and I think that will definitely pose a problem. I know at like UCI, they've banned all 100-person gatherings, that's like, this is going to be a lot more than 100 people. What is the process, you believe, for these, like, I guess, non-critical school gatherings?
They're all critical, Troy. I'm just going to tell you that right now.
Yeah, so that's the social gathering admonition that they are giving us, they're telling us to evaluate all of these things at this point. The guidance that we're getting is they are not telling us that we need to cancel these events. That day may come, and that's part of the reality that I think we all need to recognize. So right now, there's not a ban on those events. However, I do want leaders of the school, when I say leaders of the school, it's administrators, it's teacher leaders, but it's also student leaders, to talk about these decisions very openly. And I know for a fact, there's already decisions being made in various levels of pulling back certain events. And if this is an event that, you know, we know it's important, we know students really look forward to it, but is it truly essential and are we creating something that we don't want to create? So I can't give you an answer, but these are very important discussions that need to be taking place now. If we get a directive from our county or from the state, that may change overnight. We may just pull the plug immediately. And, you know, back to student travel, sometimes, you know, to make the decision sooner than later is better for everybody. You know, I know we don't want to make these kind of difficult decisions, but you know what, it's harder on people, when it's like, should we, should we not, and it's back and forth, and families are struggling, should I let my student go, my son or daughter go, should I not? And then when the decision's made that, you know what, we've decided not to go, guess what, there is a sense of relief. So I think, again, good conversations, let's have them, pull back when possible, but if it's not essential, we may get to the point where we have to end all of them.
Mrs. Snell.
I know that is, that is one of the most difficult things, is we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, we don't know. So I'm so impressed, I'm constantly impressed with the staff on how you are coming together and planning for these things that may happen, may not happen, and being able to turn on a dime. So that is, that is really impressive, although not surprising. I wanted to ask, should a student go to the nurse and have a fever? What is the next step? Does the nurse call the health department? What happens? Yeah.
So we have a standard protocol for children that come, present ill in the health office, and we would be taking a temperature to see if there is a fever, we would be asking questions about other symptoms, headaches, stomach aches, the usual. And then we would also be asking about travel history, but at a language appropriate to the student's developmental level. And so it might be a simple question about what they did last weekend, or yesterday, or, you know, last week. And if there's any suspicion that the child's illness might be related to the coronavirus, we would have the health assistant communicate with the nurse, who would then take it to a different level, make a phone call home, get a little bit more information. We typically will have children go home if they have a fever, if there's nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, those types of things. Whenever we suspect a communicable disease, likewise, we would do the same thing. We typically send a medical referral home, which is a written piece of paper indicating what we've observed, and suggest and recommend that the child be seen by the physician, we ask for a written response so that we know what the diagnosis is, we ask, is this a communicable disease, when should the child return to school, so that we have a better picture of how to manage that, if we need to make notifications to others, if it's, you know, a simple gastrointestinal illness that's not of concern.
So there's, at this point, things could change, but at this point, there's no requirement for us to report that to the health department?
So the coronavirus is a reportable disease, we don't do a diagnosis in the health office that would require testing and it wouldn't, you know, come from our level. But when we do have concerns, as we would with any type of infectious disease, we call the healthcare agency and we ask for guidance. We do that when we have chicken pox, rashes that we're not sure about, any number of conditions. We also monitor student attendance, and we have guidance from the healthcare agency that tells us when we should be communicating with them in terms of unusual absenteeism or clusters of children who are ill in the classroom.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I just wanted to add, it looks like there's an update on Orange County, the health department, it's ochealthinfo.com, and tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be a virtual town hall, so I think that too is our front line of information, so if parents or community members want, they just call into that. And then there's also a 1-800 number for anyone who has questions, so I think to take some of the burden too off the district staff, if people go directly to the OC Health Department, that's where we're getting our information, so that's helpful too.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I looked back at Annette Franco, who was nodding to me already without even having to say anything. But that would be a great resource that we can put on our webpage. But, you know, the fact that our county is doing stuff, it's very reassuring. Like I mentioned, you know, Mary was at a county meeting this morning, and I was part of a conference call just a week ago and getting very valuable information from that.
Mrs. Yelsey.
I too want to thank you and the other staff who've been working on this, I know almost 24/7, and I appreciate the updates you've been doing. I know we've done, I think, on coronavirus update number six.
We are at six.
And they've progressively become more involved, because as you know, we're learning new information all the time. And just, you know, you talk about how it's changing rapidly, as we're sitting here, two alerts came by me, one that the NBA has canceled the rest, suspended the rest of their season because a player got coronavirus, the entire NBA, and the borders, and we won't have to worry about trips to Europe because there will be no flights between Europe and the United States for the next 30 days, starting Friday.
Well, okay then.
I want you to know that you've just broken the heart of a roundballer. Russell is a big fan of NBA basketball.
But those are the extreme measures that people are going to, and they do change every day.
And, yeah, so again, I think a lot of the decisions we're struggling with right now, because it's kind of in a gray area, may not be very gray within a few days.
Well, and again, while, and I see your light, Ms. Matoye, and I'll get you. Light meant to be out. I think it's important that we encourage our parents to exercise caution, while we cannot dictate to you, but Easter, you know, spring break is coming up, and we know that lots of travel plans are being made, we are just asking you to exercise caution, just keep your families safe. We can't tell you not to go, but common sense may be dictating that. Are there any further questions? Ms. Barto, you didn't have...
Good job, by the way, thank you.
Just one more really quick.
Bailey, you have another one.
Sorry.
There's a button.
Oh, got it. When did you say the principals' meeting was, that's Friday?
On Monday.
Monday?
Monday, yeah.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
But the new key word here, Bailey, is nimble. It could occur tomorrow, depending on whether Russell has additional information.
I did remember what I said. Okay. And earlier, when you reported out that we, we as a board gave permission to the district that if something comes out tomorrow that they have to make a change with, that we don't have to all meet and vote on it again, that we've, the district has the authority to, so...
And I thank the board for that authorization, to be nimble, to be responsive if we need a resource that we currently don't have. Appreciate it.
Great. Any further questions? Okay, moving on to informational reports, Dr. Navarro, 16A.
Before we leave this topic, I just want to thank the team also. Obviously, you know, Russell is the leader on this issue, he's been the workhorse, but Sarah has spent a lot of hours, along with Mary, and so has Tim and the rest of the team that's sitting at this dais, putting in hours and hours, because there's so much to learn, we all just kind of split it up and say, okay, you take care of that, you take care of this. But it's, someone said 24/7, it's been 24/7, even on weekends. So this team has really, really done everything it's could to become knowledgeable and to really understand the guidance that we're getting, and to have confidence in the healthcare officials who are leading this. So thank you to everybody. I do have a report, I would like to inform the board that our executive team got to meet, we started up our meetings with the city of Newport Beach again this week. I was very, very pleased that we had two council members, Ms. Brenner and Mr. Avery, as well as the city manager, Grace Lung. And I want to thank Grace for her working with us to get this meeting together. We haven't had our Newport Beach district meetings in a while, but I think this last week was a really, really good meeting. We were able to catch up and discuss next steps for our... We were able to catch up and discuss next steps for our Enson project. And in that project, you know that we have a meeting on Monday. We are having, we're having a second public meeting. And this is, I've asked Dr. Baumeister to facilitate this, and also Ms. Resny, our director of facilities, will, will be there to talk about the design. But really, this is a listening tour, right? We want to hear what the community wants to suggest or wants to give us feedback on. And so we've asked Dr. Baumeister and Ada to come back with all of the information that's given to them. We'll share all of that information with the board, and then look at what suggestions they have that won't compromise safety or security of students, to see what we can integrate as far as ideas from the community. I, I also, what was nice in talking with the council and with their staff, by the way, there were three city staff members there, too, Laura, Dave, and Jim. They were, you know, really valuable members of the conversation. But I, I thought what, what was important is that they understand that before your next board meeting on the 31st, probably on the 30th, I think we're, we're scheduled for the 30th, is that right, Mr. or Dr. B? We're going to be going back to the community and say, okay, these are the suggestions you made, this is the recommendations that came from staff, and this is what the board will be discussing and deciding on their next board meeting, which is the 31st. So that they understand what the, that they're, that what the action is on the follow-up is, is going to be. So none of this would have been possible if we hadn't had some, a really good meeting with, with, with the city and the staff. And I know that they have now started their own staff-to-staff meetings on every quarter, and invited Mr. Holcomb to have Ada and, and his team join Mr. Bidnick, who's been holding quarterly meetings with them on facilities, so that they can start talking about projects and so on on a regular basis, on a quarterly basis. So there are actually two meetings going on at this point, and I believe Mrs. Barto's going to sit in on the next one, because we can only have three board members at a meeting, and so they're rotating the board members. But I felt very, very positive about it, looking forward to the information we collect at the, at the, on the 16th. I believe Dr. Shaka will be there, and support staff will also be there. But we're interested in hearing and listening, and then coming back to you with all that information, and then funneling through it and seeing what we can do that doesn't compromise student safety or security. Okay? And Mr. Holcomb, I didn't hope, I hope I didn't take your whole report. Okay.
Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you. I believe you, I think it's making its way down the road. This is, I'm very pleased to share with you, this is the Personnel Commission annual report for 1819 that Kristen Clark and her team put together each year for the Personnel Commission, but we think it's important for you to see it as well. You might remember or recall that it used to be a little bit smaller, about half this size. However, the information is growing, and so therefore, so did the paper.
Nice.
And so that's what you have in front of you. So it does give a snapshot, or not a snapshot, a collective perspective of what occurs within the Personnel Commission and the activities for classified. And on the inside, on the right-hand side, you'll notice just a couple things that I would point out to you of interest especially, and that is, under the recruitment and testing statistics, you'll see that there were 230 written examinations that were given to applicants as we were, as they were creating eligibility lists, which is quite the number of people coming through being screened. There were 90, 9-0 eligibility lists created this year. And there is, one, one of the greatest reasons why the paper had to become in large, we had to use a larger-sized paper. And you can see all of those eligibility lists that are created, and sometimes you'll see duplicate. And what that means is one eligibility list exhausts, and so another one needs to be created, which means it's a totally new recruitment in order to create that list. The other thing that I would point out on the right-hand side is the employment actions. You'll notice that there are, there was an increase of about 110 of new hires into permanent classified positions. So someone might say, oh, my gosh, what happened? So I'm going to share with you what happened. And you might think back of when we were moving the student supervision assistants, noon duty aides, into the classified unit. And so that is what you're seeing there. That is why that was such a spike in, in that number. The other one that is very impressive and we're very proud of are the number of promotions. We went from 38 to 46. So one of the goals of the Personnel Commission and of merit districts is to create promotional opportunities for employees. And this certainly shows that those opportunities are there and that people are successful in promoting into other positions. I do want to share with you that the athletic assistants that are noted there, those are not classified positions. They come, the Personnel Commission, the classified side of the house, is responsible for them at this time, but they're considered non-classified. But it, again, it just shows you the volume of applications and processing that go through the office. So I could go on and on about this report, but it's a wealth of information for you. It also shows the extra recognition pieces that we do in staff development. So I thought it would be great for, to share it with you tonight, and I really do want to thank Kristen and her team for putting it together and all the, the work they do all year to make it all happen.
Thank you. Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, I, we've been very, very busy, and I'm try, I was trying to think of what to report on, and there's, there's nothing I could put my finger on tonight that's extra special, other than that we have been meeting regularly on projects in maintenance and facilities to the place to where we're, we're just meeting a lot. Thankfully, the, the pool project has, as you heard from the student from Estancia, been turned over. The next phase increment two of that is going along well. We're looking forward to finishing that in about a month or so, and, and getting ready for a grand opening of that project. And then we're working feverishly on the air conditioning projects and all of the other projects that we're continuing to, to process for the district.
Could you tell us a little bit about what Phase Two includes?
It's a, so you'll remember that when the project originally was designed and, and the pool itself came in over our budget, we went back and looked again at the pool to see what we could do with regard to that budget, and it delayed the project by about six months or so, from being ready at the start of this last school year to being ready in, in February. And as we talked about all of that, we believed that for the budget, we could not only get the pool project, but there had been a completely separate restroom building. We thought there were efficiencies that could be obtained. Instead of building a completely new building, we could reuse existing space. And you also looked at options to increase the budget of that project, to build out the full aquatic center, which at the other schools had taken a period of years. So the Estancia project then included shade structures, for example, a team room, a built-out team room, and we were able to reuse the, the restrooms from the small gymnasium to service the pool area. So all in all, you added a little bit to the budget, and were, you also adopted a new standard with regard to the locker rooms in our high schools, our secondary schools, and the Enson Middle School. Actually, you might remember when the fire, we reduced the number of lockers to make better use of that space, since students just don't use locker rooms and showers the way that they did back when our schools were built. That's going to give us a significantly improved opportunity for team rooms to be used at the Estancia High School project. So it really, all in all, is turning out with a whole lot more bang for our buck at Estancia High School than what we originally had. So we're very excited about how that project has ultimately turned out.
Mr. Trader.
Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend with Dr. Navarro, a group of fellow Basic Eight districts, and there was a presentation there by Jeff Bell, who's with the Department of Finance, and had the opportunity to ask him a couple of questions. And, and he, he indicated that the administration really does want to try to protect your choice in terms of trying to provide you with unrestricted resources to make that happen. And so they understand that, you know, pension relief and special ed funding are some of the most flexible dollars that, that the state can send us. And so as, in your travels, of course, with appropriate distancing, we want to reaffirm or affirm that with the state and make sure that they understand that's a, that's a good thing. We want to see more of that.
Thank you. Mr. Ser.
Yes, I'd like to provide an update to our school community regarding parent choice school transfers. The year is certainly flying by, and this is another example of how quickly it is flying by. We opened up our first window for parent choice transfers on January 15th, and that is going to be closing March 15th, this coming Sunday, at the very end of the day. So that's our first round, and then following that, we notify all of our families by May 15th. Running a bit concurrent to that is the Davis Magnet process, and that, that window goes from February 10th also until March 15th. And families are notified in regards to those applications by April 3rd. After this first round of parent choice transfers, for schools that have openings, we have a second round. And that round runs from June 29th until July 31st. And people who are applying during that time are given notification by August 10th. And then following that, at the very end of our whole process, is a late waitlist application process. That opens up on August 14th, and right at 8:00 in the morning. And we consider the late waitlist applications on the Tuesday, August 25th, the day after school starts this coming year. So that's our process. It's a lot of work. If you ever get a chance to stop by Terry Russell's office and thank her for all of her work, she certainly is an amazing individual who does so much work with this. She knows it like the back of her hand, and it's a, she's, she's doing a really good job with that.
Are, is that okay? Are the two dual immersion programs, the two, rephrase, the two immersion programs, foreign language immersion programs, on the same application process as parent choice?
Thank you for that question. The dual immersion programs follows the same window of Davis Magnet School, in that it opens up February 10th, but it keeps rolling past March 15th. Unlike Davis, that has a hard stop on March 15th, that, that rolls until we have enough spots, and those applications are specifically for incoming kindergarteners. So it's specific, and we only have, you know, and we look at how many people are going to enroll, but we keep that window open, because sometimes it isn't until later that we fill all of the spots. So it doesn't stop, we keep that window open. It's a really good question, but the general frame we use to figure out where are we at with staffing it is the same window with Davis Magnet School, which is February 10th to March 15th.
Thank you. Yeah. Dr. Baumeister.
As Kenya mentioned, Estancia High School finished up their WASC report today. You guys are busy and closed session, so I thought I'd let you know how kind of that turned out. As you know, WASC is a reflective self-evaluation of a school's academic program. It's a deep dive into their data. They look at areas that they feel are of a concern to their students, that, then they make up an action plan on how they're going to address those needs. And so the, the report out from the visiting committee was really the kind of report out that you want. And they basically said, you've looked at your data, you've created, you've come up with the right things to look at, you have a good plan, just continue doing what you're doing. So that's kind of what they left behind, just continue on with what you're doing. The areas of strength that I wanted to mention to you, though, they said facilities, and they talked about the stadium, the pool, the theater that's coming online, but they were really impressed with the CTE programs and the facilities at that school. The other thing that they talked about were the, the plethora of course offerings at that school that really meet student needs, that are student-driven. They also talked about, I know Mr. Drake will be very happy about this, about integrated instructional strategies across the campus, that they have a TPD plan that all of the teachers are adhering to. And they actually, they talked to one of the teachers, and they said, you know, are really, are the teachers really doing this? And the teacher said, yeah, that's the Estancia way. And I thought that was really cool. They also talked about academic support and really honed in on the, the LINK crew, which is the, really, the ninth grade program, to make sure that those kids aren't falling through the crack. They really like that. And they also talked about the small size of the school, that because of that, the teachers, the counselors, everybody really knew the kids, and it's that small school feel. Ms. Anderson, you know exactly what I'm talking about, right? They also talked about the physical layout of the school and how clean it was. As we all know, it's an immaculate campus. And then the last thing they talked about is a family atmosphere. And at the parent meeting on Sunday afternoon, they had 75 parents show up.
Wow.
And they said, one of the parents said, "La familia." So they, and they say, they, they really thought that that was the kind of key thing for that school, is that small feel, but still kids had opportunities to really be successful and, and thrive at that school. So it was a, it was a great report.
And I'm going to piggyback a little bit on, on that idea of, of the WASC process that Estancia just went through, really from the perspective of what Estancia did in preparation for, for that. A, a big part of the WASC process is that the school goes through a self-study. And oftentimes, there, there, or there may be a tendency to kind of make it sound a little bit better than, than maybe it is. And the, the thing about the self-study that Estancia did is it was Estancia, both from the perspective of, you know, where they were and where they currently are, but in a way that really painted a picture. And also talked a lot about what they need to really continue to focus on, where their needs are, where some of their bumps are, where, you know, where some of their dirty socks are, so to speak. Because that, and that's just reflective of a group that really is looking at how to get better. And as Kirk and I met with the committee for an interview on Tuesday, that came out. They were asking the type of questions I think that we're getting at, reaffirming both the great things, but also the, the things that Estancia needs to focus on. And I think that's a real testament to the work that Principal Holt has done in his tenure there, along with his administrative staff, classified staff, and teachers, because all of their fingerprints were on this. And then, along with that, bringing parents into the fold in, in ways that are productive for the campus. So while there's still an enormous amount of work to do there, as there is, you know, in all of our schools, I'm, I'm really, you know, thankful that we have the leadership there that's recognizing it and putting the time in, you know, to, to continue to improve. So it was a great experience.
It's just the validation.
Exactly. One last thing is just to kind of put on your radar that we will be coming to you this spring with a recommendation of some sort from our high school math teachers. As you know, we are in, in the midst of our pilot process of illustrative math. This actually is the final week of their evidence collection of alignment, along with some other criteria that they're looking at. So we will be entering into some deeper conversations about what our next steps are. We also met today with the steering committee and did a lot of work around identifying what, and making sure we have a clear understanding of what problem-based materials are and what they provide us in relation to instruction, more importantly, student learning and understanding of mathematics. And we were doing this work around identifying a Program B, if, in fact, we come together in the spring and decide that we want to move the pilot into another year with another set of materials. So really deep conversations while looking forward to the 22nd of April and our consensus day. I'm also a little anxious, as I think the teachers are. But listening to the conversation of the group today, I'm really confident that they're going to make the right decision for all the right reasons around student learning.
Ms. Julie Song.
I'd like to give a report on the coronavirus.
Because it's changed since then already.
Actually, I did want to add something that I should have pointed out, is Annette Franco has been an amazing team member through all the communication, and she walked out.
She just stepped out.
Okay, so.
When she walks in, we'll all clap, and she'll wonder why.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Dr. Holcomb.
Well, I was going to share with the board all
Well, I was going to share with the board all of these wonderful upcoming events we have planned in special education. However, in the spirit of being nimble and not knowing what the next few weeks will bring in terms of which things, events are going to continue and which will be canceled, I will just say that I want to thank the board again for allowing me to acknowledge Annette Franco, who just walked in the room. Now she's going to have to watch this video to know what was going on.
You were complimented by Mr. Lee Sung. And you stepped out of the room.
You needed to let her wonder.
Oh, I didn't want her to wonder.
So anyway, I just wanted to thank the board for allowing us to do a study session and a deeper dive into the multi-tiered systems of support. It feels like a lifetime ago already that we did that, doesn't it? Because so much stuff has kind of come up since then. But our team was very energized by the questions that you asked and your engagement in that process. And we have a steering committee meeting next week, and we're hoping to solidify some more timelines, as that was one of our commitments to come back to you. So just want to thank you again for that.
Do you still have professional development? Is it still tomorrow? There was a, I had it on my calendar, so maybe it's not happening.
For which department?
At Harper?
Which?
At Harper.
Yes. Yes, that is still happening.
Okay.
Yes. It's with our secondary mild, moderate teachers.
As of 8:11.
Yes, right.
Right, as of 8:11 tonight. It's still on. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, let's see, we're on the consent calendar. Have two, one is consent, and both are in consent. There are both discussion action. So I need a motion to approve the consent as amended.
You don't need me to read?
No comments on it.
We already did it in the.
Didn't we do that earlier?
An agenda. Right, so we need to vote on it.
Okay.
Oh, okay. We can do that.
So moved.
So moved. I thought what you said was, we need to vote on.
The consent calendar.
We've moved and seconded it, but we haven't voted on it, right?
No, they just did it. That's now.
They just did.
Consent calendar.
I thought you said we have to vote on the amendment to the.
As amended.
I know. I didn't even hear you properly.
So it's moved by Mrs. Snell, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Roll call, please.
No, we didn't.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black. Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. One item that is on that consent count that we just approved is the acceptance of the resignation of Scott Fitzpatrick, who has moved on to the county and is going to be heading up their visual and performing arts. We will be having a reception here on March 19th, correct?
At 2:00.
Thursday at 2:30. Is it 2:30?
2:00.
2:00. All are invited to attend and wish him well. He will be sorely missed. Our loss is the county's gain, because he's going to be handling all of the visual and performing arts for the county. So moving on to that. Okay, moving on to agenda item A, for discussion action, resolution 160320, in support of March as inclusive practices awareness month. Dr. Jockum.
I would ask approval of this resolution. You heard a great presentation earlier on inclusive practices, and we continue to move forward as a district.
Move to adopt, resolution 1603-20, in support of March, as our inclusive practice awareness month.
Second.
We don't have to do roll call. So it's moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Ms. Yelsey. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Oh, this is the very best one of the whole evening. Approve the 2019-20 second interim report for district financial status. And we do have a comment on that. So let's make your presentation, and then we'll move on this.
Yes, so I want to let the audience know that they've made the right decision to stick around for this. It'll be 10 minutes of sheer delight.
It is sheer delight. We're doing a lot better than our peers, let me tell you.
Let's talk about the second interim. And, oh, there we go. So this required by law, Ed Code Section 42130 requires that the district certify its financial statements twice a year, which means you're going to certify that we're good, we're going concern for this year and the two subsequent years. And so with that, then, this includes changes our budget revisions between first and second interim. And you'll see that, for the most part, the numbers are behaving according to the assumptions that were made at your June adoption. And then, of course, it accounts for all the financial activity between July and October, I'm sorry, January 31st. And with that, then, we also freshen up the numbers to account for the new state budget in 2021 the governor's put out in January. And you'll have a May revise coming up here around May 10th. And with that, we also take also other considerations from school services and California Association of School Business Officials and all those folks. And so we kind of put that in the oven and see what happens. And so this is kind of what happened. So let's fasten your seatbelt. We're about ready not to go to Europe, but we'll blast off in space into the galaxy of numbers.
Yeah.
So there you go. So the highlights for the governor's budget includes the high state reserve. We're going to finish this year with a $21 billion reserve. That's amazing. It's wonderful. The state is showing some responsibility and some foresight into being prepared for a recession, because a recession could bring a $25 billion loss in revenue. And so we don't want to be in the situation we were in a few years ago, where it got, well, it was not pleasant. And then we're at the highest Prop 98 level ever, $84 billion. That's a wonderful story. This is absolutely amazing. It's great news. And then we're looking at funding for special education being restructured. And with that restructure, there will be additional funds flowing to the district. The district will benefit from that, and that's good news. And then, of course, early childhood, the governor is proposing to open up 13,000 slots and creating a early childhood department. And so there's a lot of emphasis there on early childhood education. That's, again, great news. And then, of course, the governor's continuing with some pension support. And as I mentioned in our informal report, that is some of the most flexible money he can send you. It is just great news. And then, but here, we got a few things that are the not-so-good news. And of course, you know, we're at 11 years of recovery, and that officially came to an end today.
Oh, did it? Today was it?
Yes, with the Wall Street Journal headline reporting.
Bear market.
Yeah, bear market territory. So it looks like 11 years was about as good as it's going to get. And we'll go with that. And then, of course, there's the UCLA forecast for a 3-2-2 economy, which means 3% in 2018 and 2% for each subsequent year, for each year.
3% of what, for what?
3% growth in the economy, GDP.
Thank you.
Gross domestic product. And then we have COVID-19, and then also Russia and Saudi Arabia not getting along. And I mentioned those things only because this community is impacted by those things. And that impacts our budget, because our budget's primarily, we are a community-funded district. So with that, then, let's look at some of the budget revisions that have been made. And so revenue is essentially tracking according to our assumptions. However, because of COVID-19 and Russia and Saudi Arabia not getting along, we have trimmed some of our property tax estimates. It's just prudent, it's not, it's a little bit of trimming there to not be so far on the outside, on the favorable side. And so we trimmed about so many there. So you're seeing revenue being decreased by about $863,000. Restrictive revenue is going to, however, though, is going up by 1.1 million. And that's mainly because there's a small piece, about $150,000, $160,000 for federal programs, over $500,000 for education, special education, and then another half a million for community support, which is great news. So then, if you look here, at the unrestricted level, at June adoption, that blue line there, that's where we were at on the restricted, on the restricted level, that's where we're at in total. We go to first interim, we see an increase there in first interim, both on the unrestricted and restricted side, total increasing. And then June adoption here, we're going to level off a little bit, and we have a slight decrease in revenue. You see there on the restricted side, revenue's going up. And so a total, you see our revenue is tracking about kind of where we want it to be. And then let's look at expense. Now, expense is exceeding our expectations. With that, we're seeing unrestricted expense being decreased by about $500,000. Staffing's lower about $976,000, and non-staffing's higher by about a half a million. This is kind of normal for this time of year, so nothing really to write home about. However, on the restricted side, we're increasing restricted expense by about 3.6 million. That's a little aberrational for this time of year. And it's, staffing's going up by about 3 million, and non-staffing by about a half a million. And so essentially, what you're seeing there is some real assertive movement towards fulfilling your priorities. And candidly, probably just moving a little bit quicker than I had, or we had anticipated at the beginning of the year. So with that, then, we see on the restricted side, at June adoption, that's where we're at, restricted there, and then total. At first interim, we have a slight increase on the unrestricted side. We have a fairly larger increase on the restricted side, total there. And then here at second interim, we level off on the unrestricted side. We're going up again on the restricted side, and then up again. So you see that kind of profile up and to the right. We'd rather see that more level than it is, but we're going to sharpen our pencil a bit.
Jeff, so the staffing, does that have to do with the mental health?
Yes.
Okay.
You got it.
Mm-hmm. And that's okay.
Yeah, Dr. Jockum's team's just doing amazing things there, so.
She's in the back of the room.
So other financing uses, that, again, is exceeding our expectation. And you're going to see transfers out remain unchanged. However, support for our restricted programs, including what Mrs. Snell just brought up, special education student services. And so you see there, at June adoption, and then our support for our other programs, special ed student services, those kinds of things, total. And then first interim, there's first interim, and then second interim, you can see that. And that's quite an increase from June adoption. And so, however, let's talk about ending fund balance. Ending fund balance, though, is consistent with what we thought at June adoption. And you'll see here, we did lower the ending fund balance by about 2.7 billion here, and the restricted ending fund balance just decreased slightly. However, when you look at this, so there we are at June adoption, here we are at first interim, and then here we are at second interim. So you can see here, those, the gray and blue lines are about kind of where we, the gray line is about where we were predicting at June adoption. So in that sense, we're tracking as expected. And so let's take a look at the multi-year outlook. Again, this is about, you know, we knew we were moving down this road pretty quickly. We've got a lot of things going on on the ed services side of the house, plus the air conditioning. So we're stretching to meet those priorities. And you can see here, there we are going into 1920, the green line representing revenue, and the red line representing expense. And so you see there, we're, we did good there in 1819. Moving into 1920, though, we're struggling to keep that red line below the green line. And we anticipate to make that correction here in 2021. Our air conditioning will start to slow down. We've got some other things, you know, that will slow down also. And then in the out years, we're looking to keep those lines separated, which is what we want to see. With that, then, some of the concerns that we have is pension costs. Pension costs are a large part of our business. Luckily, thankfully, we see CalSTRS employer rates, they're leveling off, which is helpful. However, CalPERS rates continue to increase, and then continually, there's no end in that regard. And so, again, anything we can do to encourage the state to provide pension relief is helpful, because that, again, is a very flexible dollar that they send to us. So ending with the responsible funding, fund balance, our reserve meets the state level of 3%. We're actually, you are actually at 4.5%. And you also have a stabilization reserve available to absorb any kind of shocks that we might experience. And so with that, then, you can see there, we kind of level through 1920, and then we expect to increase that ending fund balance through '21, '22. We need to do that for cash flow purposes, and again, to build an appropriate reserve where it needs to be. So in summary, the economy was doing well at the time we did this presentation. The state is really positioned much better to handle a recession than they were in the past. Special education ad is wonderful news. The early childhood ad is great news. The pension ad is great news. The district ending fund balance is improving, and that's what we want to see. Slower growth is projected. The state, and what we're struggling with is our rate of expense is increasing at a greater rate than our revenue is increasing. And so we're watching that, and we're going to be sharpening our pencil here in the future to get those lines.
I have the same problem.
Yeah. And then, of course, COVID-19 and those kinds of things happening. So with that, then, we recommend a positive certification for the 1920 second interim report.
Yay. Ms. Snell, you have a question? And then Wendy?
So the whole COVID-19, the whole stock market going down, should we be even more conservative? I know you're really conservative, but when do we know we're in big trouble and we need to start cutting things?
Property taxes disappear.
Yeah. So we have a little bit of time. You know, we really don't know everything until November. But we'll see, you know, we have a P2 report coming out. We'll see how that looks. We'll also be able to see what kind of happening in the neighborhood.
Oh, in the neighborhood.
And so.
I was thinking too pension. I mean, if they reevaluate what the value of the pension, could they even raise that again?
I think they could. There's some, there's some stopgaps, though, with CalSTRS. The concern is with CalPERS, because CalPERS can just keep raising their rate. CalSTRS are a little bit more, they have less options in that regard.
Okay.
And the state's billions, billions of dollars in reserve, that helps.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, because when the state is in a, when the state has a problem, they come to us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion, Mrs. Flure?
We've got, we have a comment, so Ms. Lee.
Okay.
18B.
Congratulations to your sister.
Oh.
What'd you say? I said congratulations to your sister.
Oh, to your sister. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I heard congratulations. Thank you.
I know, you say not me.
We're talking, while we see you. Madam President and members of the school board, my name is Wendy Lee. First of all, thank you, Jeff, for your very efficient accumulation of the public records that I asked for. And also, Sheri, thank you for printing out the big 20 billion, what Jeff just did. So I'm here to ask you some questions, and I want to make an argument for a brand-new finance oversight committee. You know, we go back, if you can remember, Ms. Flure, I think you were the only one that's there, that was in 1990, when the Irvine Company endowment was.
I wasn't there until 1991.
Oh, okay, my bad. Anyway, so it was before you, but that was when the agreement was made that the money from the Irvine Company would be for educational enhancements within the district. But we were both there, Madam President, and that was 1990. In 1997, when Dr. Byrne was here, we voted on the definition of enhancement. Any program or activity which increases educational opportunities for students above and beyond the board's adopted curriculum may be considered for funding from the Irvine Company's endowment fund. Ms. Franco made the motion, Mr. Ferryman seconded. And then there were some, that was in the board agenda and the board minutes. And that was, the same language is repeated over and over again, how the money is to be used. So I know we're in a financial crunch going forward, but I looked at page, section 3 on 96, the special reserve fund, other than capital, Fund 17. And according to the budget, there was $14,466,384. But thanks to Mr. Trader, he said that that was reduced about $1 million, or 1.7. So I, my question is, why have you been hoarding all of that money in a reserve account when, when you could be using it for the teachers? I added it up, there were like 86 grants. Do you know that 26 of these grants were for books in the classroom? That teachers have to write a grant and spend their time to ask for books in the classroom, to get a little measly grant, when you have this money in the special reserve fund, but it's grown because of the $6 million that the Irvine Company gave you, the district, in the 90s? And it's supposed to be for educational enhancements, not to hoard. We need a magnet school on the West Side. That's, that's one example. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. And I know that you were on the board when we, both of us had a complaint, because at one point, the money, when we, during the bankruptcy, the money was used to retrofit lighting, if you remember correctly. So we did have that. And I know Jeff can respond, and I'm sure everybody can respond, but Mrs. Stokes was part of that negotiations in regards to that fund, and it was at the behest, basically, of Gary Hunt and the Irvine Company, of how we were to spend that money in that agreement. Now, it's not to say that we could, might be able to go back, but the agreement is, we could only spend, we wrote it that, we could only spend the 1% of the interest, and we could not touch the principal, because his biggest concern was that we would spend it all, and there was not. It was to be an endowment, and we were to allow that to grow. So probably.
If I might just add, in Mr. Trader's letter that's under here, he did explain that the board stopped funding in 2004, the special projects for music and library technology or something like that. So my question is, why have we stopped special funding for special projects?
Because it was only earning 1%, right?
It's a, it's a great question. Part of that agreement was to protect the purchasing power of the endowment. And so currently, board policy states that it will protect the purchasing power of that. And so what's happened is, because the interest rate environment has been so low, there's, there's nothing there to spend, because we wouldn't be able to, we're not earning more than the rate of inflation. And so we, it's a discussion that we may want to have with the board regarding that.
Yeah, because I remember when we first were talking about this, this was, the interest was at 5% to 7%, even up to 8%. And so we were able to spend, because we were making a lot of money. And that's, that's part of the issue is now that we have, everything has to go into the county, the treasury, and we're making 1.1%. There was a time when we were making negative, you know, .92. We weren't even making anything. So that's part of the conundrum that we, that we're all facing on that one. It's just, you know, as the interest rates.
So we look forward to having that.
We may have to look at the policy and see whether we can adjust it, but I know we have to go, we have to go back to the Irvine Company and get that.
Yeah, and that was part of the original agreement, that protecting the purchase, purchase power, yeah.
Can we get a timeline date, like, because I know I've been wanting to know that information? Can we have, can we, like, schedule a time, a specific time, like April 5th, or pick a day and talk about it?
Well, we could bring it back to the board. I think Mr. Lee Sung and Jeff have had some conversations, so we'd have to bring it back and talk about staff, and then we'll share it with the board president. And if you want, we can come back. But basically, that's pretty much the rule of thumb, is if you don't earn a lot, you can't spend a lot. So right now, because the interest rates are so low, and it's pegged to some index, and if you don't, if you don't surpass that index with your investment, you can't use any of it.
Of course, we have to go back to the Irvine Company.
Yeah, so, so that is, that is the conundrum there, that keeps you from, that restricts you from accessing that, that money. But I'd be happy to have that conversation with me, Mr. Lee Sung, and Mr. Holcomb, and Jeff, and we can come back and do a session on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Matoye?
I move approval of the 2019 20 second interim report as presented.
Second?
It was moved by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Mrs. Black. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flure?
Yes.
Ms. Yosse?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Moving on to item 18C, voting on delegate assembly election 2020. Ms. Black, do you want to take this on?
I definitely want to.
Unless anyone has any questions, I would like to nominate the following people, and that is our very own Michelle Barto, Lauren Brooks from Irvine Unified, Lynn Davis from Tustin Unified, Candace Kern from Cypress, Sheri Kowalki, she's from Huntington Beach City, Michael Simons, he's from Huntington Beach Union High School District, and then Sharon Wallen from Irvine Unified.
Oh, Kathy Moffett?
Can we, yeah. Clarification for, so are we each recommending our people? How are we going about?
I made a motion.
It's a single, yeah.
But can't, but Mrs. Black asked, if that was her recommendations, I think Mrs. Anderson may have a different one.
That was my motion, and you can always not second it.
I will second your motion.
The process is that it's a single ballot for all of us. I can give you some explanations on a couple of these individuals. Santa Ana Unified has two appointed delegates already, so this is, this would be a third. He's, he wants to do it, it's his first year. Anaheim Union High School District, again, there is an appointed one, and that's Al Jabbar. And he is also on staff, so he is, he's the, he's an appointed from Anaheim Union High School District. Kathy Moffett, there is a board member, I think there's an appointed also on that one, and she served before.
Oh, from Warren Unified, you mean?
From Warren Unified, uh-huh. So she'd be coming back on. Gina Clayton Tarvin has also served previously on it. So has Carrie Buck, and Elizabeth Gonzalez has not. And I'm not sure of Pat Singer.
And what, the ballot that we have is this cycle's ballot. There's a whole, a whole another set of people.
Next year, there'll be a second ballot, second series.
Right, that I'm on, so that there's, there are other members that are already part of.
Isn't Kathy Moffett an officer?
She was, she was an officer of PTA for a while. She was a PTA, she's a, no, she is not an officer.
You mean an Orange County School Board?
No, I meant an officer in CS.
No, no.
CSBA, okay.
It sounded, thank you, that was helpful. It sounds like several have been appointed or have done it in the past. Patricia Singer would be new. I would like as many new people as possible. I think for new people to have opportunities. So I would make a motion to amend the original motion.
Okay.
So who would you take off?
Somebody who has done it before, I don't know. I don't know some of the people that Dana had, I don't know some of the people that Dana had recommended, so if there's someone who has already done it previously.
Dana, have you, and, well, the three that are, have you met all these people?
We know most of, well, I would tell you that we know most of the, we know all of the incumbents, and we know Carrie Buck, we know Gina.
We know Gina.
In my short time being a delegate, Lauren stands out, Sheri stands out, and Lynn Davis stand out. They stand out in people that I've already met and see their, their activeness in it. And, and Michael, I've, I've talked with them, talked with them on other occasions, so I'm definitely familiar with them. And Sharon Wallen in Irvine. Candace Kern is the only one I'm not familiar with yet.
I think one of the other things we try and balance throughout, throughout our experiences, size of district, and level of, well, size of district, unified, and balancing it with elementary school districts, because, so we really try and do that. That's why you'll see that Ocean View is relatively, is a new, is new. They're, they're a smaller district. Orange Unified's larger. It's one of our larger, just used to be really large, but now it's gotten small. Huntington Beach City, that's one of our neighbors, and they are very involved. They have a lot of different issues. We have two high school districts, and there's already somebody on there, so we try and balance those, the experience, the number of years they've served on, on their board, because we like to have experienced individuals.
And Cypress has, but Cypress has really been, you know, showing up and participating where we haven't had that.
Exactly.
So they're fairly new, too.
I mean, Patricia Singer's only been on her board two years.
Well, that isn't a criteria.
It's not necessarily a criteria, but it's also because the, the ability to serve on committees is from the CS, from CSBA. For example, Char Matoye, who's been on our board, is now moving up and has, is serving as CIF rep. These individuals are also eligible to be elected to serve on the nominating committee, or the legislative, legislative committee, or the annual conference committee. So we like to have a well-rounded group that have, knows the process of CSBA, so that they know about school board governance and such like that. So.
So where do we go from that?
Mrs. Anderson is waiting for a second on her motion.
Is there a second for Mrs. Anderson, as a substitute motion?
I thought she got one. No, you didn't get one? Oh.
So far, no.
My opinion is, I'm all for new people, but I don't know these people, and I know that Mrs. Black and Charlene, all you people that are on this, know these people, so I would take your recommendation over just lightly.
I met Patricia, she's really great. And one of the things, too, so.
Oh, so you do know her? Oh, okay, you didn't say that.
Um, well, and she's also Latina. I feel like we, I would like to have more representation of people who are from different sized districts, like you were saying, people that bring a wealth of new information. So that's what, that's why I added her as an option.
So who would you take off?
I don't know. I don't know them, I don't know these people. So my, I'm making a motion to add her, not to remove someone.
We can only, we can only vote for seven.
Let's take Michelle off. I don't know her.
I'm pretty busy.
Mrs. Love's company, no, leave Michelle on.
I don't know.
I do work with these people, and have for the last four years, so I'm pretty confident.
Okay, so Dana has a second, and you're making another motion, or what's going on here?
Could you, could you explain the process?
I did not have a second.
Yes, I seconded you.
Oh, you did, oh, I'm sorry.
The process is that, that Ms. Anderson is making, is recommending a substitute motion. But it hasn't gotten a second, but there's more, there's further discussion. On this, on this ballot, there are two members from Irvine Unified. We know both of them, they're very, both very involved with OCSBA as well. And they have the support. I mean, if you want to take someone off, I, we, you know, you can only vote for seven.
Well, I don't, I don't know Lauren or Sharon, but if there are two from the same district, then Sharon. So adding Patricia Singer, removing Sharon Wallen.
I don't know all of these, but I would not remove Sharon Wallen. I mean.
She's really good?
I do know her.
I'm going to tell.
Okay, so I need, I need a second.
For what?
For the substitute motion. So they're seeing no second motion. Motion dies for lack of seconds, so we're moving on to the original motion, which is made by Mrs. Black and seconded by Mrs. Matoye to elect Michelle Barto, Lauren Brooks, Lynn Davis, Candace Kern, Sharon Kowalki, Michael Simons, and Sharon Wallen. Oh, roll call, right?
Roll call for everything now.
Ms. Flure?
Yes?
Ms. Yosse?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
No.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
The motion carries 6-1. Okay, moving on to item, where are we at? 14D.
Hold on, I have to find it.
I'm sorry, 18D. I've asked Ms. Matoye to, to make a statement on this, and we have a statement to read out, primarily because this evaluation was 2018-19, and Ms. Matoye was president that year. So I've asked her to, to read a statement, because it was that. This was, this is based on last year's, and we don't typically.
Do it this late.
Do it this late, but because the agreement is that we honor the teachers first, and so we don't do anything until after we have settled with the teachers, because Dr. Navarro's salary is also tied to, he gets exactly what everybody else in the district gets with class certificate. So, Ms. Matoye, would you like to?
Yes. It's for open session agenda item 18D, March 11th, 2020. The third addendum to Dr. Navarro's employment agreement with the Board of Education provides Dr. Navarro shall be awarded a merit performance salary supplement based upon the summary performance level as reflected in the superintendent's performance evaluation for the prior academic year. The merit performance salary supplement is separate and apart from salary creditable to the state teacher's retirement system, and Dr. Navarro shall not be eligible for additional STIRS contributions by the district or himself. The Board of Education has completed the superintendent's annual performance evaluation for the 2018-19 academic year, and determined that the summary performance level is that of proficient performance. The maximum eligible award amount under the merit performance salary supplement for 2018-19 is 75% of the IRS limitation amount on TSA as of 2015. The third addendum specifies that a summary evaluation of proficient performance evaluation creates an eligibility amount of 75% of the maximum eligible award amount. The eligible award amount authorized for 2018-19 academic year is $20,000. is twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents, representing the eligibility amount of seventy-five percent. As a result, Dr. Navarro shall be awarded per agenda item eighteen D, the payment of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents to the TSA of doctors, of the superintendent's choice and direct the district's chief financial officer to effect payment to the TSA design, designated by the superintendent no later than thirty days from receipt of both the letter of award and the superintendent's application for a TSA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have, we have one comment card. Ms. Lee's. I only have one, eighteen D. You did the eighteen B already. I, I haven't gotten another card.
Nope.
I don't have another card. Did, Steve, did you put a card in?
Nope.
I mean, I'll take it if you have another card. Okay. Thanks.
Madam President, members of the school board, I think you guys are a little bit behind in doing this. Because if you read the contract, it really says it's supposed to be done by the end of nineteen. And so, here we are in twenty. A year ago, in January, you had a closed session talking about the performance review. And it was close to the public, but you had the staff here. I don't think the public understands your justification for giving the superintendent nearly thirty thousand dollars for eighteen nineteen. I think you should get rid of this part of the contract. Four hundred thousand dollars plus is plenty of money for the superintendent. When we have things like the rats, the Stancia gas issue where Steve Crenshaw had headaches and had to retire early, the OSHA violations and the Science Department and the charter school, the way that was handled, the Stancia polls. You know, the way that our teachers are, are treated by the superintendent disrespectfully. And, and I, I think that, that it's, for taxpayers, it's an excess of, of, of what the superintendent deserves. And I think it needs to, you need to go back, and I would ask that you go back to the contract. It's very confusing. Is he, does he automatically get an annual approval without ratification by you every year? Well, he'll be here forever. Isn't it your duty to ratify a contract every year so the public knows that you're ratifying it? Or is it just an evergreen that, that just rolls over every year? There's a lot of misunderstanding. And I think you, you'll be surprised on the response of the, the public that this is even happening. So, there, I think you have to get your house in order this year for the next performance and include the, the public as far as what you use for a criteria and how he's rated to, to deserve this thirty thousand dollars in addition to the four hundred thousand dollar plus that he's already getting. I do want to compliment you in just these last few seconds on this special ed presentation and the way that your inclusivity and, and the different schools, I think you're doing a very good job. I work with many, almost all special ed kids when they've crossed over and fallen through the cracks at college hospital. And so, I appreciate that part of it. But I think you've got some real problems with the superintendent's current contract, updating that so there's no misunderstanding and getting rid of this bonus. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Flor had to walk out. We haven't had discussion, but I don't think we have a motion yet. Do we?
Nope, we haven't had a motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so is there further discussion?
Nope. Roll call. Sorry.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Yostin?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
No.
Ms. Snell?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, motion carries six one. Okay, moving on to board members' report. I'm going to take this prerogative to do two things. One is, as Dr. Navarro indicated, the Enson fencing will be back on the agenda on the thirty-first of March. We will have a community meeting on the thirtieth of, of, we're having the meeting on the sixteenth where we're listening to the community on the sixteenth. We're listening to the community. They may be making recommendations, suggestions. Mr. Holcomb and Ara and other staff are working with the city. So, what I'm going to be asking you is, because there will be, there'll need to be a time before the thirtieth where the board will need to meet. So, I know that some of you have travel plans, although they may be canceled.
So far, so far, so far I have travel plans.
I, so I am asking, I'll have Sheri send out a, a survey to see what your availability is between the twenty-fourth and the thirtieth.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That's pretty much what my trip is.
That leaves you the twenty-fourth to the twenty, probably looking more like at the twenty-seventh.
I'll be in Nebraska with any luck.
With any luck.
Can we do the twenty-fourth? Do we have agenda prep anyway?
We have, we do have agenda prep on the twenty-fourth.
Right after that.
That's, that's too quick. We, remember I said-
Oh, I'll be in Nebraska then.
We have to give the team a week to take all the-
Take all the input.
In full. And so, we need a couple of days between the twenty-third and the finalizing the, the recommendation after listening to all the input.
The sixteenth is-
I, I have the twenty-seventh and the thirtieth.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-seventh, you have both?
Twenty-seventh and the thirtieth. The twenty-sixth, my flight doesn't come in till six-thirty.
Oh, you have the twenty-seventh.
I have the twenty-seventh available.
Okay, so.
Unless I don't get to go, in which case I'll have a whole week, because I don't have anything planned.
So, any, is, is Friday the twenty-seventh? Does that work okay for everybody?
That would be perfect.
Okay, so.
Could we do a morning, if possible? That would give us an opportunity to, uh,
Make some judgments?
Share information with the city afterwards.
What's morning?
That's my workout. Oh, darn.
What time is your workout over, Mrs. Snell?
Ten-thirty to eleven-thirty.
So, you can go at eight.
Can we do like a noonish?
I'll just need to leave by-
I'll be really hungry, but, okay, I'll change it.
Needs to be finished by ten.
Yeah, I could do eight o'clock if you really want to.
Would you do eight o'clock?
It'd be nice.
Yeah, I'd be cranky, but I can do eight o'clock.
Can we do eight?
You want to do eight?
I don't care. It's up to everybody else. I'm giving you those two options.
Does eight o'clock work for you, Ms. Anderson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you rather do noon?
And, and, and does that work for you, Ms. Bartow?
Either, it's fine.
Okay, let's, let's-
Okay, we got either, either, either.
You're gonna sit here and try to man seven.
What about you, Dana? Eight, eight or noon?
I'm fine with, with either one. I'd rather do eight. I'd rather do eight.
Okay.
Eight to, well, eight to eleven, like eight to eleven, what do you think, eight to eleven?
Eight to ten-thirty.
Two, nine, thirteen.
Okay, eight to ten.
Eight to ten.
The second thing is Dr. Navarro has requested, and so if you would send me your top three ideas for your April deep dive. And send them to me so I can forward those to Dr. Navarro no later than, I'm gonna give you a short time period and no later than Monday, the sixteenth. And finally, because it's a community meeting on Monday, the sixteenth, no more than three board members, because it could be a conflict of a Brown Act. So.
Monday, the sixteenth for what?
The community meeting at Enson. I have two board members who have requested to go.
Okay.
It's Michelle Bartow and Ms. Black. They are the most closely aligned.
Absolutely.
I am okay with Ms. I don't need to go.
I would like to go.
You'd like to go? Okay. Ms. Anderson, that'd be great. So, it'll be Ms. Anderson, Ms. Bartow and Ms. Black, who will be the ones that will attend that meeting. Community meeting. Again, remind, remind everybody, it's just a listening. That's, that's all we're there for also, is, is to be listening. Mr. Baumeister is, Dr. Baumeister is conducting that meeting. And it's really about getting input from the community.
Martha?
Yeah.
Just quickly, one of the things on the flyer that got sent out, that this is something that I wanted edited off and we kind of discussed, but it went out. It says, "This meeting will include updates based on direction from the Board of Education." So, I just wanna, maybe if we do a second round as a reminder, we might just want to take these off and just have an announcement about, it's an informational meeting. That was, we hadn't, we were, yeah.
Okay.
Unless we give an update.
Informational and receiving input.
Right, right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, that's important.
Okay, moving on to, okay, so board member reports. Let's start here. Ms. Snell's report.
I have a quick report for our student advisory. Thank you, Dr. G. He sent me an update for you all. And we are working currently, the students are, sorry, I have no moisture in my body right now. Martha? Because the kids are really working hard on that. But Gabe Real and Carrie Smith presented to the students on new college and career software programs that we're actually piloting. And so, they got feedback. And this is hot off the press that Dr. DiAgostino put together based on the students' feedback. So, it was really, really terrific, you know. And so, the kids are anxiously waiting.
Do that.
Our students. So, they'll be, we'll be meeting at Crotta Del Mar next month. And, and it starts at eight o'clock. And if anyone wants to attend, let me know. Because again, we can't have more than three, but, board members, but we're welcome to have anybody come if they want to.
Would you repeat that date and time?
I don't have that date and time. It's the second, third Thursday.
He's looking it up.
That's a problem. They're ready to go.
He's looking it up.
Everybody's ready to go. So, it's like, what? Okay, let's see here. It's on March nineteenth, is that correct? At eight AM and it's at Crotta Del Mar. I believe this.
And we can go?
Just check in with me and who's coming, because we can only have three.
We have SARB.
Um, can-
We have a couple more.
We have SARB. Sorry.
Can, I know you probably have all their email addresses. Is there any way we can send them the information on student board members, like a invitation directly to them?
So, we will, you know, and we're gonna share it with, we already did share with them, you know, tentatively about what the objective was. And then, and now that we have-
Okay, by the time of your next meeting, the board, the, it will, the deadline will be so close. So, I just thought it'd be nice to send, because they're so involved, to send them-
Well, that's something I would have to ask Dr. DiAgostino to do. So, and he doesn't have the application.
You know, Dr. Baumeister's working with the principals and perhaps they can, the, the, the activities directors work directly with our student advisory team. So, if you want, we could ask Dr. B to give them to the activities directors and they could pass them out.
That would be great, because it'd be great if they, it went out to youth in government and, you know, just like special invitations to that, that group.
That would be, that's a good group to-
But one of the discussions might, one of the points, not that we're running your meeting, but just as an idea, because we've recommended that the student board members are part of the student advisory. So, it's like give them a heads up that they're gonna grow by six or, and they're also very inclusive. So, that shouldn't be too concerning. Thank you. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, we also met with the classmates of youth and they, they wanted, they're very proud of the fact that they raised at their golf tournament ninety-eight thousand.
Ooh, nice.
Which was nice. And then, all of the kickoff days for baseball and pony leagues, I learned all about that. And there was a little bit of concern, you know, about how the virus, at that time, we weren't even concerned about it. And we don't have minutes or, because Amy wasn't there.
Oh.
So, I don't know if we will. You don't want to see mine, because you're illegible. But it was just a, you know, really nice and both Lance and Dr. Baumeister are fantastic at filling them in, letting them know what's going on in the projects and so, but I couldn't give you a blow-by-blow for every single solitary team. But they're, you know, very energetic and, and proud and, and they give thorough reports, I believe. So, so you're learning about it. Did you want to add anything else to it or? No? And I won't call on Lance, because we keep calling on him at the seven-thirty meeting. And he's great, by the way, as, as, as is Kurt.
Ms. Anderson?
Dr. Agostino, I saw on this, you sent this to Dana. If you could include all of us with the recap, that would be awesome. Because this is really good information and I think we'd all want to know. So.
Well, we did that today, hot off the press.
It was, yeah, it was only one of the-
So, I asked him if he had-
Well, no, I know, but I'm just asking, like, if, particularly if only three of us can attend, if you can send this, the recap for the student advisory committee to the whole board, so then we know, that would be awesome.
Yeah, absolutely. The request was made by Board Member Black and then as per protocol, I notified the superintendent's office. So, you know, I'm happy to do whatever the superintendent would like me to do. So, that was only hours ago.
Well, you, you, as board members, I'm gonna chime in, we're asking for more information. We're in this process for the counseling. So, this is feedback. They got the presentation. The students got feedback to Dr. DiAgostino. So, I asked him, could we put this together, because he had it today?
I know. I'm, I'm glad that we have it. I'm just saying, at the same time, just send it to the whole board.
Well, but the thing is, some of it may or may not be in context, is all we're saying.
It's a student advisory meeting.
We currently have a member of the student advisory, which is Dana. So, she'll be, she'll make sure that you guys all get the information.
She can almost forward it to us.
That, that would be great. I mean, because I've talked about all of us doing that for our committees. You know, sending, I, I try to send an update. Some of it is just a few sentences, but.
Good, perfect.
Yeah.
Well, they're in the process of working on now an item. And that's why we're still in that process. And so, some of the, some of the information may be misleading in a couple of sentences. So, we need to give the students their, because they've been working now for a couple of months on this. And so, we're not saying we won't give you the information. We're just saying it would be nice for the students to be able to give it to you ultimately.
Perfect. Ms. Bartow?
Okay, so, a couple of updates. I've spent a lot of time working on the student board member application the past couple of weeks. Thank you. I'm really excited to kick that off. And you, when it's up on the website, share it on your social media so that we get a lot of applications and a lot of excited students. One of the things that's on there is a really complicated term called preferential non-binding. So, I'm going to be putting out a second flyer that kind of explains what that is, just on my personal social media. But just letting students know that they can let us know how they feel about issues. And that way, we know that, how it relates to their school site in a way that we might otherwise not. Then, the other things that I have been up to for legislative are Sacramento Safari with PTA, which was really great. And there's a lot of stuff that's come and gone since, since that time, especially because of the election on the third. So, there's some updates there. But the biggest news was the update to the budget for special ed and that we actually will get some funding from that, because initially it looked like we might not get any at all, or very little. And then, the other update is that the state has been putting more resources into like technology where you can access learning, like remote learning, which I think we'll, we'll see more and more of, especially with this coronavirus. And that started about a year ago, but they really put a push in the budget for that three, two, three, two, three revisions ago. And I think that we'll just see that continue even more.
Some great things that I was able to do since the last meeting was Read Across America. I got to read in four classrooms at Wilson. And one of the things that stood out to me that was really cool was the book by Sylvia Mendez, Separate is Never Equal, was in one of the classrooms. And then, students loved it and talked about it. I got to go to Victoria's one-hundred-and-one Dalmatians present, uh, performance. It was hilarious and lovely. And very well attended. I actually sat next to a student who is in seventh grade at T-Winkle. And she went to all three of the shows that were available and was begging, "Could we have show choir at T-Winkle? I love it." I love it." And then I also attended the Future Voyagers Night at Victoria. And there were several parents and kids that were there that live in the Victoria neighborhood that were formerly at, in Huntington Beach School. So that was great. Erin Peralta did, the principals did a wonderful job of explaining the dashboard and what the numbers truly mean and that they're doing so well. And then I was able to stop by the Waske accreditation at Estancia. And that was just really well done. It was really powerful to see the room full of all of the department chairs. And there were several things that they, that they said were really unique and special about Estancia. And I think I just wanted to also congratulate Jennifer Chamberlain, helped organize the huge booklet, and it was amazing. Anyone wants to know anything about Estancia, if they get that book, they'll know, so. And then if it's not canceled, I will be attending the Wellness Together Student Mental Health Conference in Anaheim in two weeks. And yeah, that is it.
Okay, well, I want to thank PTA for another fabulous Sacramento Safari. As Vicky mentioned, the speakers were fabulous. And we, I think we had 18 speakers. I mean, this is not for the faint of heart. You have a speaker every 45 minutes. And it starts, we were up at, you know, 5:00 to catch a 7:00 o'clock plane. And as soon as you get there, you start with speakers and they're speaking at you, lunch, dinner, you fall into bed, except for Michelle, who continues to work. And then you have to get up at 5:00 again because speakers, at 7:30, you walk to the Capitol, more speakers. And she worked out before that.
Couldn't believe it.
Yeah. And so.
Overachiever.
I'm so tired, yeah. So we schlep to the Capitol, more great speakers. I mean, you know, Senator Warlock. I always forget, I know her name, first name's Cotty, Cotty Petrie-Norris, and others, other electeds and experts. And it's just pretty, it's a great, great event. And I hope you all get a chance to go. The only thing is, when you, at a certain point, you, you visit a legislator and you really are there to advance the PTA agenda, which is our agenda too. But there was a couple of things I would like to talk about. We, I got to meet with Cotty Petrie-Norris and we talked about special ed funding and look.
Amazing, it's a miracle.
Looks all us.
Good job.
And another one of the PTA issues is vaping and tobacco products for kids. And I forgot the third one. Oh, fair and equal funding, okay, yeah. So, and we've been, we've been banging that drum forever, so. But it was, it was very interesting. And I thank Michelle for rooming with me, even though I snore.
Oh. The two hours I slept, I didn't notice.
Good. The two hours you slept, that's about it too. Okay, I went to the Osho and that Osho is.
It was good this year.
It was called Escape Room at Estancia and it's directed by a former student, Carlo. You probably went to school with him.
Oh, does he now?
Yeah, did you go to school with him? Oh, well, anyway, it was really funny. It's about this group of students that are trying to get out of Escape Room. You know what that is, right?
I love those Escape Rooms.
Yes, oh, I've never been.
Oh, there's so much.
Anyway, it was hysterical, it was really good, right?
It was great.
Yes, Charlene went with me.
Yes.
And.
Commented on the wonderful transitions.
Yes, wonderful transitions, music was great. Also, I just wanted to mention to Mr. Lee Song that, Barkley? Bailey. Barkley, that's a dog, isn't it? Bailey had mentioned, and you mentioned you were going to discuss this with the principals, about how some of the teachers were really strict on makeup and when, even when you're sick. And so I just want to make sure that we are also getting across to administration, I know you'll do this anyway, but I just feel like I have to say it, that the students aren't pressured to come to school when they're sick. Because if they know it's going to be really difficult, they may come to school when they're sick. So there has to be some buy-in.
Just to add, one of the advice, pieces of advice that we're hearing from the CDC is this is not the time to be pushing perfect attendance awards.
Exactly.
We want them to go home if they're sick.
Exactly.
And we will definitely discuss this. And it also connects to a prior conversation about grading for equity and.
Yes.
All of that and some of the strategies that we want to work with teachers on and with Joe Feldman coming up this new year.
I know, and I've always, the people on the board, I mean, not the new ones, the older ones know that I despise attendance rewards because I think it encourages kids to come to school when they shouldn't come to school. So it's like, oh my gosh, three years I haven't had a missing, you know, and now I have a cold, but I'm going. So anyway, nobody cares.
I had a parent like you when I was a principal and at Harborview at that time, we stopped doing wonderful attendance awards, although I still said, I still rewarded kids that came to school on time. So I gave a tardy award, because if you're coming, be on time. But if you don't feel good, don't even come. And then it doesn't hurt you, so there's ways to get around it. Are you done, my turn?
I'm done.
Okay, perfect. I was able to attend the dress rehearsal for Madagascar Junior, which was delightful and cute. It's the first time I'd ever seen that play done. What a great play. It was Davis's play held at Mesa, which just reinforces what a great job we're doing, getting theaters at every high school. Because the elementary schools that do, do performances can do them right then at a school where there's 300 seats and better parking. And it really helps to build community and, and fosters the great love of their school. And they said, "Thank you for the board's support for helping get their new mics," because they had old, old, old mics and so they're happy. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that Mike Shaka, our principal at Enson Middle School, received the AXA Middle School Administrator of the Year Award. And that basically means the Orange County Middle School Person of the Year. So that's translated into that. And AXA is the Association for School, California School Administrators. And so that's a pretty big deal. So kudos to Mike and all the efforts that he does has been rewarded. Just like we know, all of our principals do such a wonderful job, it's nice when some other entity recognizes what we already know. And I'm done.
Prop is meeting tomorrow and thank you very much. That because the Estancia High School Luke's report about the Emma, that's, that's an ROP trip, not a, not a school, not a Newport Mesa. So I'll be taking that to.
Oh, are you able to go?
I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Because Ms. Snell is going to the foundation because she's not, she's still here, because her, her trip to the desert.
My trip got canceled. Her trip got canceled to Palm Springs.
Cancelled for the tennis. So I will be taking that to them to let them know that we're encouraging that, that potential trip. I wouldn't be surprised if it's not canceled anyway. So ROP is meeting tomorrow. All five districts did approve the memorandum of standing, so we are under the new funding model and we are moving forward on that.
Okay.
Can I move to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All right.
No roll call on that one.